... County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, May 28, 2024. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the Constitution of America, to the republic, one nation, united in the Constitution of America, with liberty, justice, and all other rights.
Also, just, I note, Pat Crews had a health issue, so he'll be zooming in from his home today.
So Supervisor Chairman Onetto, the Board has to approve the request for remote participation under the emergency exception, so his recent surgery, I think qualifies, but the Board has to formally approve it.
I'll make a motion to approve that emergency access.
Second.
Participation. Participation is a remote.
Second. We have a motion by Axe, a second by Brown. Roll call vote.
Chairman Onetto?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Crew?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Forster?
Aye.
And Supervisor Axe?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous. Moving on down, Public Matters.
One second. Supervisor Crew, could you please start your video? You need to be on video and audio.
Okay.
Thank you.
Also, the Board met this morning in closed session. Met on Item 1A. This is Conference of Labor Negotiators. An update was given. We will do Item 2A later. Item 3A, Claim of Ryan Doris. Claim was denied. Item 5A, Confidential Minutes were approved. And Mr. Gelot, I have a conflict in 4A. Would you mind reporting out on 4A?
Yes, there are actually two items on 4A, initiation of litigation, under that Government Code section. The report out is direction given on both.
Well, thank you. At this time, we'll move on down to Public Matters, not on the agenda. This discussion items only will actually be taken. Any person may address this Board on any subject. If you would, please sign in and state your name to the record, and there's a three-minute limit per topic. Is there any members?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a statement.
Yes, Supervisor Axe.
Okay, I just learned today, and I think there's an item on this, on the agenda, but the county received the $2.3 million grant from Caltrans for Upper Ridge Road repavement project, so that'll go from Highway 88 down to the end of Upper Ridge Road. And this Board wants to thank Senator Marie Alvarado Gill for securing those funds for that project. We're really appreciative.
I'd like to echo that. I mean, it's, we need road money desperately, and that will be very helpful, and we appreciate her efforts, so we thank her for that. Any members of public like to address this Board on any item?
Mr. Chair?
I'd like to publicly, oh, I'm sorry. When he's done, you'll... Morning.
No pen up here, so it's a good thing I have one. Comment relative to roads is the subject matter that I want to talk about today. I've noticed on your agendas that you are looking at the sales tax, the half-cent sales tax, and the one way to go about it is to do a special tax, which requires a two-thirds vote. This Board seems to be trying to get around that by going for a general tax that only would require a 50% vote, and they're basically saying that if we get that approved, trust us, we'll have an advisory committee who will make sure that the money goes into roads. Some of you may, some people may trust that to happen. I'm not one of them, and I think it would be a mistake. The problem that you have, gentlemen, is that there has been no transparency that I can see, and that you really need to bite the bullet and just let out there. If it gets rejected, requiring the two-thirds vote, so be it. I suspect it may get rejected, whether you have that general fund set up that way. The public, just despite the condition of the roads, they know it's bad, they're just not inclined to pay any more taxes. So anyhow, that's my opinion. I hope you go straight up and go for the special, requiring the two-thirds vote to repair, replace, and resurface our roads. Thank you.
Bill, did you listen to the last meeting, that discussion on that item?
I not only listened, I had copies of the item.
And the Board was inclined to go with the two-thirds recommendation? That hasn't been set in concrete yet, but that was the sentiment of the Board.
Well, I guess I didn't pick up on that, Richard, but I think that's the right way to go. I really do, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of public?
Mr. Chair, thank you. I'd like to publicly compliment Jack McGee for the wonderful Memorial Day celebration that we had up in Amador Cemetery. We had another speaker besides myself that was a Purple Heart recipient, talking about his time in the Marines, and it was really an interesting and wonderful experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Just an item for note, I mean, I might be talking to a wall, I don't know, but I just thought I'd put it out there. I went to Memorial Day service up at the American Legion, and you'd think there's around 38,000 people in this county, and I understand some are up to Pioneer Celebration, but you'd think more people take a little time out of their day to go and thank the people that died fighting for our liberties and freedoms. It's kind of a bit sad to me in a way. I mean, I understand something, you can't make things are happening, but a lot of times people are going out and playing and having fun, and I think the least we should do is go and remember the people that give us that fun and liberties and freedom. But anyway, just a side note. Any more members of public? Seeing none, we're going to move on to approval agenda.
I'll move.
Second.
A motion by Forster, second by Axe. Roll call vote.
Chairman Onetto?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Crew?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Forster?
Aye.
Supervisor Axe?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous. Moving down to approvals of items on the consent agenda, I believe, Richard, you said you had an item that you have a conflict on?
Yes, I need to recuse myself on Item 7O, Consulting Service Agreement, Bridge Minor Structures Inspection, Evaluation, and Training by Consor Engineering, Formula Quincy Engineering. My son-in-law works as a senior engineer there.
Okay.
You can approve it separate?
Yeah.
He doesn't have to leave the room, as long as there's no discussion.
I wanted to make sure. So, okay...
Can I make a motion then to approve 7O right now, or?
Yes, that'd be good.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve Item 7O on the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Axe, second by Brown. Roll call vote.
Chairman Onetto?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Crew?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Forster?
Recuse.
Supervisor Axe?
Aye.
Motion carries 401. Myself, I also have an item I conflicted on. This is Item 7G, and this is a Putnam Ranch Subdivision Environmental Impact Report. So I would like to, Richard, would you want to maybe go ahead and ask the vote on this?
I'd move to approve Item 7G.
Second.
Chairman Onetto?
Aye.
No, you're recused.
Excuse me. Recused.
Vice Chairman Crew?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Forster?
Aye.
Supervisor Axe?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries 401 with one recusal, and that would be myself.
I'd move to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Forster, second, I believe, was by Brown. Roll call vote. The remainder of the consent agenda.
Chairman Onetto?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Crew?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Forster?
Aye.
Supervisor Axe?
Aye.
Okay, well, thank you. Moving down to regular agenda, first Item 6A, this intergovernmental agreement between the County of Amador and the Ione Band of Miwok Indians. I have to recuse myself on this because my house is fairly close to where they're looking to do their project, so at this time, I'm recusing myself. And, Richard, you'll take over as Chair.
Okay. Supervisor Crew has asked me to do this since he is at this meeting virtually today. So Items Intergovernmental Services Agreement between the County of Amador and the Ione Band of Miwok Indians and County Council Gelot, would you like to give a report on this?
Yes, Supervisor Forster, this is, so there's a short staff report in your packet, but this is the culmination of our discussions with the Ione Band of Miwok Indians. They're moving forward with their casino project in Plymouth, or near Plymouth, and the committee of yourselves, Supervisor Forster, and Supervisor Crew, plus involved department heads and other staff, we've been meeting with the tribe and tribe's representatives since about February. And the agreement is there. It's sort of phased in over four years, but after four years, there are mitigation payments for primarily law enforcement, the sheriff, the DA, and probation. It's consistent with the agreement that we negotiated with Buena Vista and for their casino project. The staff's recommendation is to approve the agreement. And just to follow up, the tribal council did authorize the approval of the agreement at one of their meetings last week.
All right, thank you. Any Board member comments before we go to public comment?
No.
Hearing none. How many individuals would like to speak today on this item? Okay, I'm going to be, since we only have four items, we do have a three-minute public comment, three-minute comment period, but I'm going to be fairly liberal on that, since we only have four people, so who would like to speak first? If you could come up and state your name and sign in for the record, please. I think John Mr. May came up, got up first. Thank you.
I am somewhat disappointed in the efforts you folk made to let this item get as far along as it's gone. Interesting to me that the item was presented by Supervisor Crew and Supervisor Forster, who occupy Districts 1 and 2, and it's, the impact, I believe, is on District 4, up in Frank Axis area. I did not see, and I may have missed it, any mitigations relative to the roads, lighting, traffic, environmental impacts, the impact on residents and businesses if this casino is built, which will, in my opinion, be not beneficial to them. It'll impact their property values, your home values, and I didn't see any mitigation measures in there for that. You guys put mitigation measures in to deal with law enforcement and so on and so forth, but I didn't see anything that said, "Okay, but you also got to take care of these issues, the roads impacts, the lighting, the traffic, environmental, and so on and so forth." Why did that not occur? And should it not be in there before you move forward with this proposal?
Well, I believe that we did address some of those issues.
So, to be clear, there is a, the tribe prepared a mitigated negative declaration. It has several mitigation measures, numerous mitigation measures related to traffic. Those will be addressed through Caltrans, because they're primarily state highways that are impacted. And every other mitigation measure that's in, that's identified in that document, my understanding is there's basically, the way the compact envisions it, there's a letter agreement where the tribe, and between the tribe and the state, that, where the tribe would agree to comply with those identified mitigation measures. The tribe and the county separated out these sort of ongoing mitigation measures related to public safety, and there's an anticipated agreement with the AFPD for fire. So, and there's a payment to ACTC in this, as part of this agreement, that's not, that was not in their mitigated negative declaration. So those things were addressed.
Was the tribe recognized in 1934?
I'm not going to go back into that. We litigated that, the tribe prevailed, it's, other parties have litigated it, it's, we lost. We went all the way to the Supreme Court, we lost, we're trying to move forward now.
That doesn't change the fact that they were not a recognized tribe in 1934, and therefore, you cannot grant them the right to build an engine casino. I don't know who will sue over this, but I'm pretty sure that there may be some people that'll just say, "Oh, wait a minute, guys, are you sure you want to jump into this?" Because they weren't a recognized tribe. Thank you.
Next up, John.
It's always a pleasure to be back before this board as a former Board member. I actually was on the Board when we gave Margaret Dalton her agreement to have a bingo parlor in 1982. So I've been along on this ride for ever since. I would like to give you a brief history of the impact of public safety of casinos in Amador County. In the past, Amador County Sheriff's Office has indicated that 30% of the sheriff's population is directly related to the casinos. Considering that, in 1923, budget for public safety was $29.691 million. That is in a worksheet, I gave you two worksheets along with this cover letter. It would stand to reason that the casino's fair share would be $8,843,863. Currently, the only revenue the county is collecting to cover those $8 million costs is reported by the County of Amador, is $1,239.40. This was from, the money's donated by the Jackson Ranch area. This $7,645,823,000 is a shortfall, is being subsidized by the citizens of the county, leaving each household to cover $466.21 annually. Per household is what that cost is, that is coming out of the general fund that could be used for roads and other things. Further, please consider that without a waiver of their sovereign immunity in this negotiation, the county has no way of collecting the casino's obligation. Given the histories of casinos in Amador County, who are not paying their fair share, you could be, by this action, just assessing each household in your community another $76.50 annually to support any in gaming. Given this history, I ask you to consider the following today. Request a waiver of title sovereign immunity in these contacts before you move any further or get even playing field. Since the compact, send the, the other option, send the compact act to the state and ask it to legally ratify the public hearings for community input. This bill went through the state legislature without any public hearings at all, as required by law. It is an illegal compact, illegal action of the legislature. They need to correct that. You could schedule a formal public hearing with a 30-day notice. There's not been a public hearing in 14 years, none since this communal project was moved in the county's jurisdiction. All the information in the IAS and everything is, it's based on, in the city of Plymouth. You could recognize that the tribe needs the IGA, your agreement here, to secure its investors. You are critical for them moving forward and can choose to do nothing until they level the playing field and give sovereign immunity so that you have a guarantee of the funding. You can protect the citizens of this community by making them pay their fair share and not subsidize the operation with taxes of the Amador County citizens. Please act to protect your citizens and hold a proper public hearing. In review of the agreement that you guys are reviewing today, it has many, many errors in it. It needs to be reviewed, it needs to, public needs to have, there's, the dates on many of the items are, and the recitals are wrong. The information in a lot of those recitals are wrong, some of the recitals are reciting the wrong issue. Those need to have an opportunity to review those. The mitigated negative declaration, how can you have a mitigated negative declaration when you've had no public hearings to mitigate anything? The public hearings that we had clear back in 2011 and prior, in none of those cases was the casino to be considered to be in the county. It was, there were three options, all of those three options were within the city of Plymouth. The, all of the mitigations that we requested at that time, on water, on the transportation, we did a complete transportation study, it was, they never answered one of those. They never discussed one of them, never answered one. We heard not one thing on anything that was given in any of those public hearings, and none of those have been mitigated. So how do you have a mitigated negative declaration when you have no public input and no legal public hearing on this proposal that's before you guys today? So, and we keep hearing over and over again about the county spending $4 million to try to oppose these casinos and what did they get out of it? And they keep saying that you didn't get anything. Well, let me, in the worksheets, you can see, we lost $88 million in revenue over the last 25 years that we didn't collect for public safety from the gaming and the Jackson Ranch area. We would have lost, potentially lost $18 million in the last 18 years if this casino had been there when, built when it was proposed.
You could wrap it up pretty quick, John.
Okay. Just consider the fact that who's going to make the agreement on whether they pay this money or not is the 500 members of the tribe. Say they're making $1,000 a month when this thing gets started, and they have the option of making another $200 a month by not paying the fees that are guaranteed to the county, and yet getting the same class of service, and get that service for free and not have to pay for it. What do you think's going to happen on that? There's a pretty good chance that they're going to be like the other two casinos and not paying their fair share. That needs to be reviewed, that needs to have public input. There's nothing legal in this IAS. The trust, the land taken into trust is not legal. The recognition of the tribe was not done legally. The compact was not done legally. It's on and on and on. We, you can keep hearing that the No Casino lost their case. We didn't lose the case. The county lost the case for us, because we had talked to the county prior to the hearings and said that we felt that they were arguing the wrong issues, and they went forth with the issues they were arguing, which were different than ours, and they lost. And the Ninth Circuit and all their wisdom said, "Well, the county lost theirs too, so we're throwing ours out." They threw it out without prejudice, and so there's never been any action and no hearings on our case. There's been no public hearings on this issue as of what is before you today, and you please need to have a public hearing with.
All right. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Next up?
Good morning, members of the Board and staff. There is much that should be discussed today, but with the limited public, limited public notice and no meetings with the public prior to this meeting to identify and discuss the many issues and problems with the repaired agreement, with the proposed agreement, I will limit my comments to very general issues with three exceptions. John's already mentioned the recitals and the recitals. There are a host of issues with the accuracy, veracity, and the adequacy of the recitals, far too many in the limited time today to present. In the definitions, there are also a host of issues with the definitions, and again, too many to present in the limited time today. This agreement speaks of good-faith negotiations. Is there a member of this Board who believes that the Ione Band negotiated in good faith with a submission of a mitigated negative deck which was outdated, data over 15 years old, inaccurate, incomplete, with false and misleading information throughout? I'm going to guess the answer is yes, based on the agenda item we have today. If we move to the effective date, and that's where I'll spend the majority of my time, there's a number of line items that should be added to the effective date. There's a number of line items that should be added to the effective date. In the interest of negotiating in good faith, the agreement, the agreement will become effective after the map in the compact has been corrected. Oh yeah, the, the map in the compact is not correct. In the interest of negotiating in good faith, the agreement will become effective after the several maps in the mitigated negative deck are, have been corrected. Don't ask me why the ION Band puts incorrect maps in their documents and then expects people to believe that. That's true and factual. It's not. The maps are wrong. In the interest of negotiating in good faith, the Board of Supervisors should not vote or approve to ratify the agreement until the ION Band provides to the county several documents verifying the land status of tribes claiming the I L C A as authority for trust This is a simple request. Those documents would include the consolidation plan approved by the secretary as required by the Indian Land Consolidation Act. Don't take my word for it. Go read the act. Twenty-five U S C, 2001. So this would include any D O I B I A trustees dated prior to March 20th, 2020 for the ION Band as required by the I L C A. Just as, as a, a matter of note, if these deeds actually existed, they would be on file in your recorder's office down, down at the end of the hall. I mean, we could suspend the meeting and go down and see if they're actually there. They're not. There are no trustees for the ION Band prior to March 20th as required by the I L C A. You can, easy to check that. Just go down to the recorder's office. Take five minutes. If the secretary approves this agreement after all the above actions are completed, it cannot be a 45-day deemed approved action. Deemed approved actions, oh, as the compact that was deemed approved by the secretary are deemed approved only to the extent that they comply with the law. And so they never tell you what is complying with the law or not. You have to somehow go to federal court to figure that out. I believe if the county were to delay any vote on the agreement until, in an act of good faith, the ION Band corrects the maps in the compact and the mitigated negative deck and provides the documents identified above, there will be no need for a vote. The reason's quite simple. These documents required by the I L C A do not exist. In 2020, I asked for these documents with the Freedom of Information Act from the department. Eighteen months went by and I received no reply. And I submitted a second FOIA. I submitted that FOIA at a few minutes before two o'clock California time, a few minutes before five o'clock Washington D.C. time. I hit the send button on my FOIA request and eight minutes later, I received a phone call from Washington D.C. concerning why I was submitting a second FOIA on this matter. If there's anybody in this room who's ever contacted, sent an email, or made a phone call to Washington D.C. and got a return call at eight minutes, please come and talk to me. This is a matter of some importance to the department and the B I A. Oh, I received answers to both of my FOIAs. In essence, the answer I received is, uh, we don't have these documents. I now ask that this board table any vote on the agreement until a similar amount of time is afforded to the citizens of Amador County to meet and confer over this proposed agreement as you devoted to the ION Band. Oh, those citizens who you allegedly work for and serve. In summary, I'm making three very simple, reasonable requests with essentially no cost to the county. In the interest of evidence in good faith negotiation on the part of the ION Band, I'm requesting the county ask that the map in the compact be corrected and all the maps in the I M M D be corrected before any vote is taken. Again, in the interest of evidence in good faith negotiation on the part of the ION Band, the county requests the ION Band provide the county with the documents required by the Indian Land Consolidation Act. Specifically, the consolidation plan approved by the secretary and the trustees for the ION Band dated prior to March 20th, 2020, before any vote is taken. And then lastly, requesting that the board today does not vote on this agreement without conducting meet and confer sessions with the public similar to the meet and confer sessions conducted with the ION Band. If you approve this agreement today, you will be party to a fraud based on a clear violation of federal law, the Indian Land Consolidation Act, by officials at the Sacramento Regional Office. The Sacramento Regional Office, where a member of the ION Band is the director. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? Okay, thank you. Anyone on Zoom? And for the record, the last speaker was Butch Cranford.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Jamie Labenco, District Five. If I had it my way, District Five would have a representative on the Board of Supervisors If I appear to be unprepared or frustrated, it's because I am both of those things. Not the least of which because this item, when was this agenda posted? Thursday evening? It's incredibly shocking to me that we would post an agenda item of this much importance to my district, our district, that our community in Plymouth that has such huge repercussions with literally one day's notice to contact the people involved in that.
It's legally posted according to law.
But it was a holiday, Richard, so we had Friday. Anybody who was aware of this item being on today's agenda had Friday. I spent most of my Friday on the phone with Pat Crew. I probably owe Pat Crew a drink for ruining his Friday. But there was very little time for your community to actually wrap their mind around what was being presented today. I probably would have taken the opportunity to speak to Sheriff Redmond as well and just understand where these numbers came from. That opportunity was not given to us. I'm a little conflicted. I'm always a little bit conflicted when I speak about the casino issue because I certainly never want this to come across as me being disrespectful to the tribe or my relationship with members of the Dutchki family, not the least of which was my son's FFA teacher for many, many years and probably changed the course of his life. So I struggle with this. But I want this board to know that with very few exceptions, nobody in District Five wants a casino. The exceptions are a handful of people who believe that it'll bring a bunch of jobs and of course, the tribal members who will benefit from it. The reason you don't have hundreds of people in the room today is because the community doesn't believe they can stop it. That's what's changed, is that the community really struggles to think that they have a voice. And I hate to think that this agenda item and the way this is being presented today actually convinces people of that. The county is entering into an I G A to provide public safety, um, money. I, I recognize that that's kind of what is of the most importance to the county and that the other items will be negotiated with the city of Plymouth and perhaps Caltrans. But this, this intergovernmental agreement actually gives them the ability to get the funding to build a casino, would be my understanding. So my question is, what if you don't? Do you have to? If you don't, can they sue? Because I can absolutely a thousand percent appreciate your fiduciary duties to your citizens and not wanting to get caught in another lawsuit and losing the type of money that was lost fighting the Buena Vista Tribe. But I can't help but wonder, do you have to do this? If you don't do this, what are the consequences of that? I imagine that there are probably not a majority of the members of the Board of Supervisors that want to see a third casino in Amador County, much like much of the community I just spoke about. You're probably acting this, in this way because you don't think you can stop it. I guess I'll close with this. We live in a country right now that has got so much apathy towards government and you see that in these meetings, I'm sure. This item has whereas after public meetings listed in the document that you are considering today. When were those meetings? At the very least, I would ask that you have those meetings. And frankly, I can understand why you don't want to. People are going to come in here and they are going to be frustrated and mad and you might end up in the same place you are today. But I think you owe it to your constituents and at the very least, if this casino project moves forward, this county and the tribal members can say that they didn't do this without the proper opportunity for the community to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Yes, ma'am.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I'm going to tell you my name and when I tell you my last name, I don't want you to make a bunch of assumptions.
Can you, can you pull the mic down first?
Oh, I'm very short. Uh, my name is Wendy Cranford. I live in Plymouth and I live at the cross street of Bush and Sutter. So I don't know if you have visited Plymouth and know where that area is, but it's tucked back behind Pokerville. My property, where I live, butts up to a wonderful neighbor's property who butts up to what would be the proposed casino's property. So as you can imagine, I have strong feelings about looking out my bedroom window at a casino. Jamie's comments are hard to follow. Everything she has to say pretty much sums up exactly how I feel as well. I was alerted of this meeting and agenda item on Friday and I'm not going to sit up here and give you a bunch of numbers and try to tell you the impacts like John and Butch went through. What I'm going to tell you is that I have a 15-year-old daughter that I am raising and that I have a beautiful home and we live in an area that is very small. And already with the small amount of movement that has happened on that property, we have felt the impacts of that. But you wouldn't know that unless you lived on the corner of Bush and Sutter. So my, my plea to you today is to hear out the public on these issues. I have been around Plymouth and lived in Plymouth since I was two years old. So I'm not new to the community. I've lived there pretty much my entire life. I want to preserve what is there. I am not anti-growth. I, I understand that growth has to happen in a good and positive way. However, I have friends that lived on New York Ranch Road. Notice I said lived. They don't live there anymore because their home was burglarized more than once, along with other interesting things being left in their yard. I don't want that to be me. The home I live in was built by my husband's grandfather, uh, but, yes, grandfather. I don't want to leave there. I don't want to be pushed out of my community because of crime and traffic. It's already difficult living in an area where there's high traffic on the highway. I cannot fathom what it would be like with a casino next to us. And I know the discussion on the table today is not stop the casino totally, but as Jamie said, you have the power right now to make some decisions that will help the community. And I, I, I implore you, please, I beg of you, to not make this vote today. Don't make the decision today. Let the public be heard first. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Morning.
Good morning. Good morning, members of the board and, and staff.
Just so you know, I'm timing you like I'm timing everyone else.
I'll be much quicker.
Okay.
I'm Sarah Dutchki. I'm the chairperson for the ION Band of Miwok Indians and I'm going to refrain from addressing the many falsehoods that were shared with the board today and I'm going to focus on the positive. That positive is the relationship that the county and the tribe are working to build for the benefit of our respective communities and the future of our two governments. It's taken a long time to get here. It's a lot of water under the bridge. But your county council is right. We've waged a battle against one another and at the end of the day, the tribe prevailed. So I just want to extend my gratitude to the board and to Supervisor Forrester and Supervisor Crew for working with us to negotiate this agreement. Extend my thanks to the Sheriff's Department, Probation Department, and the Fire Department for working with the tribe and explaining to us how you provide your services, offering us a look behind the scenes and getting to know us in a positive way to work with us moving forward. This project is fundamental for the future of my tribe and its people. We are your largest tribe in the, in the county with over 800 citizens. They deserve this opportunity. We deserve this opportunity and just like others in this county, county deserve to call Amador County home, my people also deserve to call Amador County home again. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak? Anyone on Zoom?
No, not at this time.
Come on up, John.
I would like also to eradicate, we have nothing, I personally have nothing, uh, to, to oppose the tribal people of this community. And my daughter, who just spoke to you, her third name is Janet Marie Ellen Colburn, after a wonderful Indian, a hundred percent Indian woman that lived in, uh, adjacent to us on the, on the Casino's River. I have, on my property, I have a cemetery that has many Indian bodies in it and we respect that in any, in any way. Our family has been friends with the Dutchkies forever. Sarah and I, I consider her still a friend. We can still have a drink together. But I don't want it to anybody and I was probably the swing vote when Margaret got her bingo license and I've been through this all, all right. So I don't want anybody to, to think that this is anything that was, um, anyway hostile to anyone, any party or group. It's just the responsibility of this community to protect all citizens of the area and especially who, who's going to pay for the impact of the 30% increase in crime in Plymouth? Who's going to pay for the victims? How's that covered? So thank you. Um, I'm just here to try to protect the citizens of County of Amador. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, Mr. May?
A quick reminder to the board. In 2005, overwhelmingly, the citizens voted "no more casinos" in Amador County. You guys might want to remember that. Those citizens haven't forgotten. So as you move forward, think about it.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, I'll bring it back to the board then for discussion. Any comments?
What if we did table this and then have a public, you know, bringing it out to the public?
The requirement, Mr. Jalock? Is there a requirement to have public hearings?
So, no. There's no requirement for a public hearing. You're just approving an agreement. The tribe did the EIR, the mitigated negative declaration. All the rules for that are set forth in the compact. It's not the same as SEQA. It's similar, but not exactly the same procedure. They approve their document. There's a comment period for certain entities. We've engaged with the tribe, and we've met with the departments. I mean, it's up to the board. I haven't heard, you know, the comments we hear are, "We don't want a casino." This agreement doesn't approve a casino. It doesn't authorize the casino. My understanding is their financing is lined up. You know, there's not a viable path to stop a casino. We're trying to have a relationship with the tribe.
Wasn't there a public comment period or sessions in the past? Weren't there during the original EIR, when they put together their casino? Or is that not done at all?
There may have been many years ago. But that was their, that was with respect to their fee of trust. I don't think that, there probably wasn't. There was, they did an environmental document for the fee of trust action. I don't know if they had public hearings. That's also a, I don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you address the limit on sovereign immunity? There is a limited sovereign immunity here.
So there's a limited waiver of sovereign immunity in the agreement. So if there was a breach, it would allow the county to pursue it. And if the county breached, it would allow the tribe to pursue it as well.
Others? There's very few tribes that are going to go with a full waiver of their sovereign immunity.
I wouldn't expect that ever to occur.
And that is different from the Buena Vista.
I believe, I believe all of our agreements with tribal entities have a limited waiver so that if there's a dispute about the agreement, the parties can sort of work that out. But nothing more than that.
Just addressing a few of the comments. To say that the county has not listened to constituents and the county has not done our best to try to stop not just this casino but other casinos, I think, is wrong. We spent over 10 years fighting this issue. We've traveled to Washington and listened to voices, listened to people, or talked to people that really didn't want to listen to us. It's what it comes down to. As far as the impact on the community, I think nobody knows that better than me with my constituents in what used to be all of Jackson Valley and Coal Mine Road. Now it's bifurcated by redistricting, but the impact is there and the impact is going to continue to be there and expanded in Jackson Valley. Now they're putting in a gas station and probably an RV park up on Coal Mine Road. I get calls and talk to people about it all the time. People come, are up in arms about it. What do you do? People are up in arms about the trash alongside the road that doesn't get picked up anymore. We negotiated in good faith with the Buena Vista ban. How far did that get us? It created a sour relationship where now we get very little from the Buena Vista ban. And I don't like it that we negotiated a good faith agreement over a year, and now we basically get the scraps from the tables. Here, we have a situation where we are, we've negotiated in good faith and tried to build a relationship that was harmed by 10 years of us trying to stop the casino from moving forward. So I think at some point, I'm not saying you give up, but you try and work for a better result in the end. And county has spent millions of dollars on these casino issues. Most of it has fallen on deaf ears in Washington. Any other comments? Supervisor Crew, Vice Chair Crew, any comments?
I would only comment, Supervisor Forrester, that the deaf ears are also at the state with our complaints over the years.
That is true. So, on board members, in the absence of comments, I'm looking for a motion.
Okay. Bill wants to make one more comment.
I'd like to cut off comment at some point, Bill. If you can, go ahead. I kind of know this is going to be about Buena Vista, but...
County Council said all we did was say we don't want another casino. That is patently false. We gave specific reasons why we were concerned. I guess you don't listen very well, Ray. You didn't listen to Butch at all, did you?
Okay, Bill, we don't need insults on top of it.
Okay, well, one last thing. With the Buena Vista people, you guys couldn't get any cooperation. I did. I got them to pick up the trash, and they're going to pick up the trash again on June 7th. You know why? I went up and talked to them and acted civil, and I became friends with the Personnel Director. Think about that.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, board members.
Supervisor Forrester?
Hold on.
I just want to add, the issues that Mr. Cranford brought up, I've met with him, we've talked about them, I've discussed them, I've prepared a memo for the board, I've researched it, that it's not being ignored. It's been thoroughly looked into.
Mr. Cranford? Yeah, very quickly. Just to be clear, while I have been an opponent of the proposed casinos by the Iom Band in both Plymouth and the county, if they were to comply with federal law, I would not be here today. They were not in compliance with federal law in the proposed casino in Plymouth, and they are not in compliance with federal law with this proposed casino in the county. So to be clear, if they were in compliance with federal law, you wouldn't hear from me. Thank you. All right, board members.
I'll make a motion then, to approve the proposed intergovernmental agreement between the County of Amador and the Iom Band of Mewoc Indians. Anything else I need to add to that? Okay, thank you.
Is there a second? All right, motion on the floor. Roll call vote.
Vice Chairman Crew?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Forrester?
Aye.
Supervisor Axe?
Aye.
All right, motion carries for 01. Thank you all for being here, and we'll call Supervisor Onetto back in to resume running Did you find him? Keep insulting, Bill.
I'm sitting upstairs.
Next item. We're what, 6B, Richard? Next item?
Oh, we're all the way to minutes. No, go ahead.
The next item is 6B. This is General Services Administration. Presentation of Central Sierra Economic Development District's Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. Karen?
Good morning, Chairman Onetto and members of the board. I am here to introduce to you Mr. Dave Taney and Mr. Alex Bloom from the Central Sierra Economic Development District. They're here to discuss and present to you a little bit about the district and what they've been doing and the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy that was put together for the district overall.
Good morning.
Morning. Morning, Dave.
Thanks for having us this morning. We appreciate the opportunity to talk to you and give you an update on things. Supervisor Axe invited us down here, so thank you very much. My name's Dave Taney, and I'm the Executive Director for the Central Sierra Economic Development District. And I'll introduce my colleague here in a second. We're here at Supervisor Axe's request to talk about the new Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy that was just created for the five-county Economic Development District. I wanted to first just give a reminder on what the Central Sierra Economic Development District is. We, in our latest incarnation, we've been around since 2015. And, go on to the next slide. We've been around since 2015, and we are recognized by the Economic Development Administration under the Department of Commerce. We are, the district is administered by Motherlow Job Training. I'm also the director at Motherlow Job Training. And the board has 12 members. Five counties, Amador, Calaveras, Tuamne, Mariposa, and Alpine Counties. Each county has an elected official and a citizen member. And so from Amador County, we have Supervisor Axe as our elected official, and Karen Warburton, who just introduced us, is your citizen member. And Amador joined the county. You may have remembered, I was here several times a few years ago to talk about Amador rejoining the district, and you've been a member since 2018. So just a refresher on the district. Let me go to the next slide and just talk about some of the value we bring. So at the very least, we're a forum for economic development collaboration. So we have five counties, and economic development and elected officials from each county meet and talk about best practices that are being accomplished within each county. And there are two cities as well, I should mention. The city of Sonora and the city of Angels Camp are also members. So because there's a great opportunity where a lot of individual economic development leads might have a limited view, across the five counties, there's a real collaborative effort that takes place to where we can share ideas and maybe hear about things that we wouldn't have otherwise heard about. It's also a great place where we can communicate between industry and local partners and make sure that everyone's got a voice in the process. So that's one thing we do. Another is we secure funding. And in the past few years, we've generated about $1 million and a half dollars in funding sources. And the most recent is the broadband initiatives through the California Public Utilities Commission. We just landed about $600,000, which is being rolled out very shortly through a partner named Tech Systems. And it's going to be to gather input on the needs in the area and maybe produce some proposed solutions as well. We also negotiated with California Jobs First. The applicant for that is Sierra Business Center and, is here a business?
Council.
Council, yeah, sorry. And so I negotiated on behalf of Central Sierra to get $250,000 of that grant money to fund CSED, Central Sierra Economic Development District, for us to have a dedicated staff member for that entity. I've been supporting the entity as sort of a part-time, and I've got my staff all working part-time. But with that money, the $250,000 from California Jobs First, they just gave us another 100 as well. We went and hired my colleague, Alex Bloom, who is now the Economic Development Manager for Central Sierra Economic Development District and dedicated to the district. So in addition to Motherlow Job Training, continuing to do the administrative work, we also now have a dedicated manager running the district. So that's been something that's been long overdue. And one of his primary goals will be to roll out the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. And as you can see, we just ended up with an EDA grant, planning grant, for $80,000. I know you all in Amador County got your own EDA grant to write a SEDs. And this SEDs was, your SEDs was considered and folded in with the five-county regional SEDs, where there's more regional strategies than in-county strategies, but the two are dovetailing together. And so that was the SEDs that was just completed. It's up on our website. There's a link to it. But Alex is going to just give you a high-level overview of the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, the SEDs that was just created, and his role in sort of shepherding that plan going forward. Are there any questions before I turn it over to Alex?
Not at this time, Dave.
Okay. So turn it over to Alex Bloom. Go ahead and take the mic.
Good morning, board and staff. Thank you for having us.
Morning. Morning.
Thank you. So as Dave said, I am the new Economic Development Manager for the Central Sierra Economic Development District. I'm excited to be here and be part of this project as we continue to grow the economies of these five counties and the region as a whole. Just as a current, up to speed as far as what we're doing currently, as Dave mentioned, we're part of a CASF grant, which is basically developed to bring broadband internet to the entire state of California. The goal of the CASF, this specific grant, is to bring internet high speed to 98% of California households. As Dave mentioned, we have retained a consultant, Tech Systems, to help execute and work on this grant. This grant was, the contract, rather, was just approved by the CSED board at our last meeting on May 16th with a proposed start date in June. So we're very excited to get moving on this. As Dave mentioned, this will kind of be a first mile and middle mile initiative. Tech Systems will engage local stakeholders, constituents of these five counties, to create some cost-effective strategies to achieve this broadband access for all. As an economic issue, broadband is extremely important moving forward as we look to bring new businesses and complement the competitive nature of this region. So it's extremely important. They will also identify potential infrastructure products, projects, excuse me, and broadband deployment projects for this grant.
Alex, could you, we talked to RCRC in the past about, and signed up for their broadband grant as well. Can you tell how that's going to work together? Because there were a lot of entities or agencies that were bringing money to this, and can you tell us how you're going to work with that? Or are you still coming up to speed on that?
Yeah, I am still coming up to speed on that. I'm not sure of any collaborations that are going on with...
So, so right now, we're forming a... So, so right now, we're forming a broadband advisory panel that will be made up of representatives from some of the other broadband initiatives that are going on. So we're not stepping on each other. And so we don't have a plan exactly how they're going to dovetail together, but they'll be at the same table.
But you're aware of it?
Yeah, we're aware of it.
And you're working to move forward in a productive way?
Yes, yes we are.
Okay.
Those people at the table, some of them are going to be supervisors, I would assume, need to recognize other costs that might be on top of broadband. When it's installed, sometimes it can be installed along the road. Sometimes you have to go through the road. And if that happens, we don't want to make our roads worse than they are. Usually we require the road to be fully overlaid at that point, rather than just one side. That just makes common sense. So, but government people, the regulators, the approval people don't really understand that. So it needs to be expressed at the beginning, that full costs need to be covered.
Okay, understood. Thank you. Go ahead. I'll stand.
As Dave mentioned, another project that we're currently working on is our California Jobs First that he mentioned, has a 250 plus an additional $100,000 funding. It's part of where my job is funded through. They're currently in a planning phase. They're doing a lot of community outreach in all five counties. You may have seen their flyers around town. They're doing local community events to kind of reach out to people and see where people are on issues. Part of our community involvement, really making sure that our goals align with the community goals as well. Some of the issues that they're addressing, workforce development, physical infrastructure, social services and housing affordability. All projects funded through this program will create sustainable, good-paying jobs and that will benefit our disinvested communities and advance our climate goals as well. So all things that are important to the region as a whole. The upcoming community outreach events will help to determine some of the community challenges, develop some solutions and let the community really have a say in how our workforce development money is spent. So it's something that's very important, you know, within this community, having everyone be able to have a say. They'll finalize these strategies and they're planning on implementing a plan as of August of this year. The final project that I just submitted a grant for is the AHEAD Grant, which is, AHEAD is an acronym for Access to Housing and Economic Assistance for Development. This grant ensures that disinvestment, disinvested communities develop infrastructure and resources needed to fully participate in our modern economy. CSed's grant is a project for community micro grants for small business entrepreneurs. Grants could be awarded to startups for growth, capacity building, or for training initiatives. The funds for this grant must be dispersed within 18 months, so the project implementation urgency is high. So we're hoping to get some results from this should we be awarded the grant. They could be immediate within our community.
Let me just kind of add in here, with now a dedicated resource for the district, we expect to apply for more grants and accelerate the funding. Like I said, we've, in recent years, we've generated about a million and a half dollars just Central Sierra Economic Development District in opportunistic fashion. But Alex is really going to be on the hunt for new grant opportunities moving forward.
Yeah, I think a big part of what we're doing with this position is capacity building. So to speak to what Dave said, is really try to hunt down more grants and improve the local economic climate.
Is the goal to create jobs or to bring corporations or businesses in the communities?
It could be either, or. Where every grant opportunity has its own focus. With California Jobs First, the focus is on jobs. But there are other things we're looking at for low-cost loans for businesses and other things that don't have anything to do with employment necessarily. But just anything that resonates with this community, we can go after it.
I'm thinking if you're going to create higher-quality jobs, but you need the corporations or companies to come in. The one threshold that companies like Target and Trader Joe's have set is like 50,000 people. Now, I'm not sure in this economic environment they'd ever come in anyway. But what they don't recognize is we have the equivalent of 50,000 people. By people that shop over here, mostly coming from Calaveras County. We know that because when certain petitions are circulated, many of them cannot sign if they're from Calaveras County, which is a considerable number. When people collect signatures, they find that out quickly.
Right. So every one of those retailers or whoever it might be that we're trying to attract has their own calculus on what they look at for demographics in the area. But to the full extent possible, we'll try to consolidate those demographics regionally, which is the purpose for a regional economic development entity. So.
Dave, so just, this came up at the last meeting, but these were going to be micro grants or micro loans for, of 1,000 to several thousand for local businesses to get going. And I think that that would be a really good opportunity. Also, I think you've gotten the Small Business Development Center to start interacting in our world now up here?
Right, we did actually. The SBDC has these headquarters offices down in Stockton and Modesto and Merced. And it's hard, sometimes their region includes one or more foothill counties, but it's sort of an afterthought. If they can hit their numbers by just staying in Stockton, then they'll do it. But we have had, we just signed a contract where SBDC is now officially in our job center in Sonora. That's their headquarters. Gotten to know them really well. And now the other SBDC centers like in Stockton that serves you guys up here, now they're coming up here more often and I think they're making this a focused investment area. And they're going to speak at the next, Frank, they're going to speak at the next CSed meeting on serving this area up here. So.
Okay, good. Were they in contact with our chamber at all?
I don't know. I'll ask them. They have a new guy down there. I think his name is Les. But he's very interested in coming up here and he's attended our last CSed Board meeting in person. So they're very committed to working up here.
Okay, thank you.
So that's one of the things we have been working on. Thanks for pointing that out.
You know, one thing I'd like to say, and I'm not throwing this at you folks, but it's, I have a little bit of a memory and I have a little bit of history. Just looking at our county here, so we're looking for prosperous, high-paying jobs in economics. Right up there Safeway, we used to have a mill. And a lot of people worked there, supported a lot of businesses in this county. The spotted owl debacle came along and they said, "We're going to save the spotted owl. We're not going to touch our forests." The mill is gone, the jobs are gone, now our forests are gone. And some of those same people that supposedly helped us now want to bring prosperity and yada, yada, yada to life. And now I look at our energy rates and we're going green and it's going to be great. People's energy costs have gone way up. I mean, I don't know how you can push back. We're doing the best we can. But sometimes there are a time when you're talking to some of these other folks and say, "You know, you ever considered this?" I think the regulatory framework that's been put forth is killing us. And then we're trying to get grants, we're trying to get programs. Well, you know what? I mean, I'd rather we had some items still that we used to have that were taken away from us.
Yeah. So we could put a plan together, but there's so many dependencies with that plan. And so we'll try to herd the cats as best we can and identify the dependencies and try strategically to knock those off. Housing is always a challenge for.
Yeah, now they're making housing. You have to have solar, you have to have automated fans in the bathroom. You must have this, this. It used to be people could build a very simple house and afford it. And now it's house perfect, but people can't afford them.
You're going to talk about Title 17, right?
Supervisor Anetto, kind of along the lines, there was in an earlier slide, they secured funding and actually performed a biomass utilization business plan. Yeah, you might want to mention that.
So we got a USDA grant to develop a biomass utilization plan and business plan. And we wrote that in conjunction with some of the local partners. And actually Hartwood Biomass followed that plan and developed.
Should explain what biomass means in this context.
Okay. So biomass is, also called woody biomass, is the remnants left behind in a sort of a dead and decaying forest that's not healthy. And you want to pull it out as best you can, but make use of it wherever you can. And so the.
Well, I also think in their plan, they're referring to just the actual living trees.
Yeah, the living trees also.
That would be harvested for timber as well.
So the lumber companies tend to be interested in the lower part of the tree, where you can make high-quality lumber. And then what they've done, Hartwood Biomass, which is what the ultimate business plan that came out of that grant, said, "Well, if we could have sort of an intermediary that could take the middle section of the tree and create posts and poles and that top of the tree and maybe make wood chips for burning and firewood." You really bring three different markets together through one sort of intermediary. And it's a very efficient way to harvest the wood out of the forest. And we wrote that plan and one of the businesses took it up and invested up here. And they're employing people and it's working.
Which business was that and where is it located?
Hartwood Biomass, yeah, down in Jamestown.
Okay.
So, so we, there are elements of the plan that, like Supervisor Anetto says, there's dependencies, there's regulatory oversight, there's housing constraints, there's various other, you know, environmental concerns. But we'll try our best to roll that forward as best we can and be the good stewards of that plan. So, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, just to kind of tag on to that, it's kind of a good segue into where I'm headed. But with that biomass, it fosters the climate resiliency of the region. You know, as Dave was saying, it allows us to not only support jobs and industry by creating these biomass plants to help with fuel reduction within our forests, but it's also building relationships with the United States Forest Service. Like in Tuolumne County, we have a master stewardship agreement that allows us to do all these things. And it's, they're vertical industries as well. So a lot of them will use this woody biomass to power their plants. Provide energy is perhaps the long-term goal for them, as well as producing products that are sold and creating jobs. So there will be some growth within this industry and I'll touch on it here in a moment. So what is the SEDs? It's the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. It was created in partnership with Chico State University and Chubb and Concepts, which is an economic development and marketing firm. As Dave mentioned, we received a grant from the EDD to fund this research.
EDA.
EDA, thank you. Developed with input from a broad stakeholder base, including all five counties, kind of co-mingling the Amador County data, as Dave had mentioned. The SEDs is a five-year roadmap promoting economic vitality within this industry. There are some core challenges that are addressed within it. It provides a SWOT analysis of the region. So kind of important things to look at and focus on as we move forward with economic growth in this region. There are two main components to the SEDs, the strategy and the technical report. So the technical report is all the data, all the insights that they gathered, basically allowing us to garner strategy moving forward. So the strategy portion takes that technical report to the next level, implements goals, objectives and practices to move upon, moving forward. CSed is the steward of the SEDs and will drive those initiatives, excuse me, and periodically report on these goals and objectives like what we're doing today. So to kind of address some of the things that were brought up. So in Tuolumne County, there has been a significant update to Title 17. Title 17 has to do with the availability of housing and the permission that goes into housing development. It could have resounding impact for the Motherlode region. Affordable and available housing continues to be an extreme issue of importance in this region as we continue to look for bringing larger companies, like you said, Target or Trader Joe's. We have to be able to house employees and be able to provide affordable housing to employees that may come to this area. It's going to require a multi-pronged effort to address this issue. This is not going to be a straightforward issue that is going to be one simple solution for implementation. So this Title 17 amendment, I believe, will provide some significant leverage moving forward. So some of the key changes to the amendments are follows. It has significantly streamlined the process for housing development. Developers in Tuolumne County may now bypass some of the reviews for projects by meeting standards when planning new projects. So there's a lot of bureaucratic things that had to happen in the past. And moving forward, some of those will be eliminated to streamline development. Homeowners can also now add a second primary dwelling and an ADU on the same R1 parcel. So increasing the availability of housing within our region. And the new code also fosters town center revitalization, encouraging mixed-use development. As we know, there are many town centers in this region that are half-empty. I can speak to ones in Sonora and Angels Camp and Arnold, where we have mainstays with things like grocery stores and drugstores, but other bays sit vacant for long periods of time. So part of this Title 17 amendment will allow the streamlining and encouraging development on vacant urban land, boosting foot traffic and business.
How does the Title 17 amendments compare to what the state has already put into place with respect to affordable housing? If it, because that has a legal definition. Because presumably if you possess the property that is zoned appropriately, then there's, then there's, you know, it's pretty much, there's no, I guess there's no discretion over whether that can occur or not? Is that your understanding?
So I don't know how they, I don't know how they interact with each other, but we'll look into it.
All right.
I'm not sure either. I think specifically just for our region, it's been my understanding that there have been a lot of steps that are needed in order to kind of facilitate this progress. This amendment allows us to move forward more vigorously and kind of promote economic development within these town centers especially. I think that could be one of the big changes, is promoting mixed-use development. As you see in bigger cities where we have residential and commercial spaces co-mingled in one area. So I think that could be an important step forward for economic development. Second, biomass, as Dave had kind of touched on, we have partnerships with the USFS, including the Tuolumne Master Stewardship Agreement. And I think those will continue to pay dividends towards sustainable energy production and climate resilience. As outlined in the SEDs, climate resilience is one of the most important facets of economic growth in this region. Fostering that climate resilience will improve community safety and, excuse me, contribute to economic growth. Biomass is used for energy generation within those plants, so that's going to reduce our footprint. The businesses will make sustainable growth and having lower environmental impact a priority within their businesses. So like I had kind of mentioned, that vertical integration of producing their own energy, producing a product, also implementing jobs. I think it's a very win-win solution for working with local counties and continuing to develop industry in this area. The companies also go out into the forests and remove the biomass. That's part of their business model. So that improves our stewardship to the land as well, you know, reducing that potential fuel for forest fires. We have a few biomass industries, or companies I should say, that currently exist. SPI, Pacific Ultra Power, Golden State Natural Resources, Yosemite Clean Energy. And we're in talks with Tuolumne Bioenergy, which will be launching this fall. Should provide about 20 jobs. And they are kind of modeling that business model that I had spoke of, producing all their own energy, being self-sustaining, producing a product and creating jobs.
Yeah, Amador once had a biomass plant and I guess it's still there. It might, it might come back. But I think all of these counties need something like that to dispose of a lot of the waste material, because it just keeps growing back even after you remove it. And there's a lot of landscapers that need a place to take the material. And now they're taking it to the dump and then it just gets trucked down to Sacramento and that's not good to put in a landfill. Also, a lot of this material can be reutilized or composted into like a mulch and a fertilizer. There's actually a company here in Amador. or composted into like a mulch and a fertilizer. There's actually a company here in Amador that does just that, and they utilize a mixture of char, compostable material, including food waste, and and then inorganic materials, you know, mine tailings, basically, to create a non-chemical fertilizer, which has a lot of good, you know, it's good for the environment as opposed to the chemical fertilizers. And that's something that could be expanded into other parts of the region, too. It's not it's not a, I guess, super sophisticated. I don't mean to to put it down or anything. I think it's very utili very useful. And the this can rebuild the soil. It's actually part of a almost a green cycle there. And I think not only in this within this central Sierra Economic Development District, but also within the Jobs First, we really need to work on building kind of a biomass economy and knitting together a whole ecosystem about that because what comes out of a biomass power plant, the char, could then be passed on to something else. And I think that we need to make sure that all of that is coming together and functioning at a higher level, rather than just leave it to the market wins, so to speak. I know that a lot of people like that, but I think it's worth our trouble to to try to put a little more effort and oomph into it.
Well, I think if you want to really get the biomass going, one of the problems they have is they cannot get the financial incentives like wind and solar get. Coming out of Sacramento, they they will not they will not support that, from what I've been hearing, at least so far. And that's really where, you know, if they if they could get that, where they get basically more money for power and get some of those renewable credits and tax credits and stuff like that, that'd probably make your biomass a whole lot more feasible. Just a curious question, what is Tooluma County doing as far as changes to Title 17? Do you know?
Just the just the ones that I had listed. I'm happy to go over them.
Yeah.
So the key changes are developers may now bypass some reviews for projects by meeting standards when planning new projects. So kind of some of that bureaucracy with meeting with boards and things like that, getting things approved, it will streamline that process and kind of make it quicker and easier. The second one that I had noted was homeowners can now add a second primary dwelling and an ADU on the same R1 parcel. So that's a change from prior. And the new code also fosters town center revitalization by encouraging mixed use development, encouraging business development on urban land. So like, for example, Twain Heart, where there's a big open town center and many, many bays open, there's projected use to turn that into a mixed commercial residential area. And I think part of what Title this amendment to Title 17 will be doing will be promoting developments like that within our region.
Mr. Chair, my question is, is that the ADUs are already state law, so I don't understand why the change in that for Tooluma.
I believe the change is that they can now add a second primary dwelling and an ADU on the same R1 parcel. That's my understanding.
Two primaries and 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 one secondary?
That is correct.
Okay, okay, that's where I'm.
I'll double check on prevailing rules versus the Title 17. Do a cross check on that.
Yeah, we've incorporated that in our rules, too, with our ADUs, but I don't think we allow two primaries. I don't know if I'd want to allow two primaries with an ADU. So they can.
If it's big enough, if it's 20 acres.
Yeah, they can be progressive, but that could start creating some issues, too. As far as the commercial and the residential together, I agree. It's a good mix and a good fit in some places. It's not always going to be a great mix and and fit. And the state is passing rules now basically to override passing legislation to override that counties couldn't even stop it. And sometimes putting commercial in the residential areas might not be the best fit. But if the state overrides us, we don't have a whole lot to say about it. So we're fighting our state associations are fighting the state right now on some of those changes where they're trying to be the land use managers for counties.
I understand it could be an issue. Speaking from an economic development perspective, I think it could be a great boon. You know, it increases foot traffic and also just creates more money coming into the town centers. A lot of these town centers have sat vacant for some time. In my previous experience, I worked up and down the Highway 4 corridor and saw these vacant town centers in Arnold specifically that just sit vacant and unused for for months and months and months at a time. So just to kind of create a sense of economic viability within those areas, you know, where we can actually get tenants into those buildings, I think would be a step in the right direction. I agree, it's not always going to be a universal solution, but just fostering economic growth within those areas, increasing foot traffic, bringing businesses and people to the area, I think is an important step forward. So.
No, I I understand what Rich is saying, but also understand the flip side of the coin. We're talking about being sustainable and green anymore, but if you look at how people lived and worked years ago, a lot of times you might have a person at a shoe store and they lived above that shoe store. And then we said, hey, we'd come along, we had modern planning, and we're gonna say shoe store is here, housing is there. It was probably more sustainable back then, realistically.
People weren't afraid to walk up half mile to get to work, too. If you ever listen to Teresa's and some of the stories they tell, the old miners would would live there at Teresa's and then have to walk a quarter or half mile to get to work every day. I don't think people today want to do that, most people.
Well, anyway, thank you.
Amador County can implement whatever pieces of the SEDS make sense for y'all.
So just some quick community statistics, some things that are of prevalent importance as we move forward. Trade sector growth is something that's identified within the SEDS as being an important factor in regional economic growth. We've had a decline in trade sector growth over the past few years. And in order to continue economic viability of the region, it's important because it adds higher wage jobs and it improves long-term community viability and productivity. So as you can see from our visual here, we've had a significant decrease in trade sector growth. So some of the programs that we're trying to implement with CSED and with Motherload Job Training are promoting that trade sector growth to continue to make that a viable sector within the motherload. Another important issue is our median population. It's kind of blocked off here at the end by the Zoom screen, but as you can see, our median population is significantly higher than the California standard. So California is at about 36 and a half or so. Our median age is above 50 years old. So this is something important to consider as we move forward. We need to continue to attract new populations and younger people to the region and foster that economic growth. So it's important that we understand that this is an area that needs to be addressed. As this population ages, a lot of our industries are population-serving, as you can also see to tie one graph to the other. So a huge portion of our economics are population-serving, and will continue to be that way. But as we continue to grow economically, it's important that we bring, you know, a younger basis in here to support those population-serving industries and industries like healthcare and things like that will become more important as our population ages.
Define the trade sector.
Trade sector, so just about we're talking about any we're talking about plumbers, electricians, manufacturing, healthcare, all the the businesses that go into serving a population, continuing to make it grow.
Yeah, it's sometimes some of those businesses aren't going to make it, though. I went to Ace Hardware yesterday to pick up kind of a specialized part, and he recommended I, well, you could have gone to Fastenal if Fastenal was still in business, but because they they were specialized in those areas. So some of those businesses aren't going to make it in communities like ours. There's just not enough business to provide enough revenue for them to sustain them.
Understood.
Well, that's and that's part of the big problem in our county, is we lost some of our base businesses. I mean, we lost the lumber mills, which were huge, and the sand plants had kind of come back some, as far as, you know, the clays and sands. But, you know, there's not a lot of base businesses want to come here. I mean, we got to have something they want. So unless you have a tech center, and it doesn't seem like, I mean, that's really not really a viable option these so far. Infrastructure not here for it. So what else do we really have to offer? Because a lot of a lot of companies leaving California. So, yeah, we have we have a problem because we're not you don't have we don't have basic logistics. We don't have the shipping, receiving, major airports, major roads. So what we have to offer is basically generally probably tourism, some natural raw resources. And at that point, there's not too much more.
So that you bring up a good point, Supervisor Onetto. It's the base industries are the ones that that really spur economic growth, where you're producing something here and selling it somewhere else. And the money, the money comes in.
Like the wine industry, you know, Chano Valley, that area, it's that's a base industry.
So we have these forests that have been treated as a liability, and and they're starting to be seen as an asset. And and the more we can do biomass restoration, biomass extraction, secondary businesses that are using the biomass and employing people, and then tourism is dependent also on the forest, on a healthy forest. So the more effort we put into the forest health and and restoration, the more it it helps multiple base industries.
Well, one thing I will say, years back, the forests were a hell of an economic engine. They were a major asset. And then we put a lot of things in place where we didn't manage them right, and they became, yeah, you're right, to a certain degree of liability, which it should not be. They should be an asset. But that's going to take government to kind of change their method of operation. It's like the spotted owl thing. I saw we had one president made the spotted owl habitat smaller, which means you can manage a forest better. And I saw here a while back where Joe Biden went reinstated it all. I thought, well, I guess we're going to condemn the rest of our forest to catastrophic fire.
With the focus on climate change, the 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 possibility of more climatic fires is is really something they're trying to avoid. So there is money and there is subsidies now coming to try to help with forest health just for the avoidance of of catastrophic fires.
So basically trying to remedy the the situation they put in place.
For some extent. I mean, forest mismanagement is part of it. Climate is is due to different factors.
It is. I grew up in those forests, Frank, and.
Pardon me?
The climate is maybe a small portion of it. Basically, I grew up in those forests, and the mismanagement we've done is just horrendous.
Another thing that is the whole insurance industry, people are having a hard time getting insurance if the forest, if there are more fuel breaks, we're going to hear we're here about that today, are in place. And and people are clearing around their house, and then the major forests are in much better shape. That's going to help. In fact, the insurance industry may provide a subsidy to to that, to to lower rates. I mean, people are paying, you know, as much as $10,000 a year. Now, having said that, maybe we've, you know, haven't been paying what we probably should should be paying in in homeowner's insurance and fire insurance. But be that as it may, you know, there's probably a break that could could come if we really get things going in the right direction.
There's I think there's evolved thinking that's going on these days on how many ways a healthy forest really affects not only the economy, but but the environment and and just, you know, so many different different aspects of of the quality of life. So I'm optimistic that that there's that renewed focus on the forest health will will help us with jobs and economic growth and 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 overall prosperity moving forward.
So there are four main goals that are outlined within the SEDS, and I'd just like to briefly present you with the goals and some of the future priorities that we may have moving forward with these goals. So goal number one, achieve a culture of lifelong learning to ensure a robust talent pipeline with the education and skills needed by existing and prospective employers. So we've kind of touched on this a bit, but in my opinion, I think we need to begin creating pathways to jobs with higher pay rates, speaking to the traded sectors, things like that, creating high skill bases within our within our region. I think it's critical to economic growth. We need to create, support, and promote opportunities for career technical training. I think this is really important as we move forward. Some examples of existing initiatives are the K-16 Initiative that was funded through Motherload Job Training that funnels students into high demand fields like healthcare and the forestry corps. Also, by supporting mentorship and apprenticeship programs in a variety of trades, especially those that support relevant industry trends in this area. Goal number two, establish programs, policies, and practices that support and encourage economic development that respects the historic and natural environment of the region while improving residents' employment opportunities. So we've also been speaking to this as well. Climate resilience is of tantamount importance in this area. Creating industries that converge with that ethos is our path to economic success. So continuing to support the biomass industries and other tertiary industries that support that climate resilience. As we know, and Supervisor Onetto had spoke to, preserving and respecting the local environment is key to longevity. You know, we need to respect our natural environment. It's what visitors come here to see. It's what sustains us. And in order to continue to build on our economic growth, I think it's important to preserve and respect that environment. Economic and economic growth and sustainability don't have to be in opposition to one another, and I think they can work in tandem to achieve economic and environmental sustainability. Industries like biomass exemplify this type of success and partnership. Promoting tourism-related activities that will leverage this region's economic resources, so things like trail system development and ecological and environmental education, so expanding on our visitor experiences to really highlight our natural resources. Third, expand the region's economic development capacity through stronger collaboration, regular communication, and strategic planning with local, regional, state, tribal, and community partners. So it's my belief that this region is stronger together. Collaboration within industry is key to long-term economic growth. Collaboration between government, nonprofit, and tribal partners fosters connectivity, including in the planning of the economic development of this area. We need to expand upon and leverage existing partnerships by fully engaging all of the stakeholders, bringing a diverse and inclusive perspective to this area. Sharing of best practices is also important, in my opinion, especially amongst industry stakeholders, helping each other and helping each industry grow larger and more affluent within their within the business climate. And then supporting industry sector partnerships by facilitating industry-led discussions with educational curriculum, vocational training, and workforce development.
On that on that front, we're we just convened the Motherload Healthcare Industry Partnership, which has been around several years. We started that up several years ago. And we've got Sutter Amador was there, as well as Dignity Mark Twain, and Adventist Health Sonora, and John C Fremont. So these are all the major hospitals in the area, and some of the clinics, MACT was in attendance, and Matheson Clinic, some of the tribal clinics. And so by creating an industry industry partnerships like that, we can get a clear voice from industry on what their priorities are. They can talk amongst themselves on what the best practices are, but we can hear from them with a single voice what their biggest pain points are and what occupations and skills are necessary. So we're actively forming those industry partnerships.
And then goal number four, identify and implement land managed practices, policies, and strategies that incorporate resiliency and place-based initiatives. As we all know, inclement weather is a facet of life in this community. Preparedness for future events is critical to the region's ability to prepare, withstand, and recover from natural disasters. So I see an economic future for this region that is not just based on touristy. So tourism is, if we have inclement weather, could be significantly affected with the wildfires, mudslides. There are some things that also generate income, like we had the snow mageddon last winter that probably drew more visitors. So improve. So improving upon our resiliency to these climatic, climatic events, but also allowing them kind of the opportunity to grow within them as well. So also establishing a link between restorative land practices and economic vitality is a feasible outcome. Promoting land stewardship industries that restore and enhance the CSED's natural ecosystem as we're speaking of with the biomass industries. And finally, uh, by understanding our unique challenges, we can begin to develop solutions for preparedness as we move forward.
So we presented a 120-page SEDs here with sort of one or two slides and there's a lot more to it. We're happy to come back at a future date and talk about progress made against those. Uh, we're going to have, uh, Alex as a steward of the SEDs. We've had a SEDs all along, but I'd say it's been something we track, but, but we haven't really had the, the capacity to steward that and now we do. And so we're happy to come back and drill down in any area. I encourage you all to read the SEDs. There's I think an 80-page technical report that has every statistic you could want. And then a 40-page, uh, strategy based on the technical information. And that's, that makes up the SEDs, uh, those two documents. Uh, there's a link to those online. You can look at them online, print them out. Um, and like I said, we're happy to come back and, and present a progress report or, or whatever you want.
When you, when you come back, um, I'd like to identify some people that should probably be in this room too and get the reports to them before you come back. So they have time to review it or their staff does. But, uh, one would be the individual that's working, uh, with the, um, new processes he's developed on the, um.
Fertilizers.
On the fertilizers, that certified fertilizer now, I think he should hear what's going on. Um, our hospital CEO would be a great person to have here or his staff. He's well engaged in trying to make the hospital even a better place to work and, and get employees there. They have a residency program. So, um, just identify individuals like that, that should probably be in the room too.
Okay. We'll come back with a, with a stakeholder, a group of stakeholders. Sure. Okay.
Yeah, just.
Before you leave, is there any members of public that'd like to comment on this item? Right?
Well, I'd just like to say that, uh, when I joined, uh, Central Sierra, I, I, before we got back into it, and I know there was some good reasons why, uh, our board left because of the way things were structured financially. But I think we've, we've moved past that. But, um, it was kind of on life support and you've kind of brought it back. I know Larry, uh, one time was, uh, key to all of that as well. And, um, you know, it's gone from, well, what do we do? And we have a little, you know, a little bit of money, but then we, we, uh, we got the, the SEDs and now we have Alex as a result to help implement that. And we've gotten a number of grants and, uh, there's a lot of progress being made. It's, uh, you know, compared to when I first joined, that's about eight years ago, seven years ago. It's, it's come a long way. So it's, uh, you're really, uh, you know, ramping up and building a good head of steam. So, uh, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your leadership also on the board.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Here he is.
At this time, the board's going to take about a five-minute break or.
Okay.
I think you had a public comment. We'll come back about, oh, five after, maybe a little, a little bit later.
Sorry about that.
Yeah.
Back to order. Our next item is six C UC Crop Extension. Presentation of the Amador County Mitchell Mine Field Break Maintenance Project.
Good morning, or supervisors. Still morning.
Yeah, good morning.
It is.
Community members, hi, my name is Brian Allen. I'm an Assistant Specialist with the University of California's Cooperative Extension Office. I'm based here in Amador County. And today I want to talk to you about a project that I've been doing with our local farm advisor, Scott Onetto. We've for about a year have been looking at the control of woody biomass on masticated field breaks in our region. And what techniques are available to private homeowners and what is the most effective at trying to control regrowth on those field breaks? I have a handout that's a summary of our project that everybody on the board should have. For people in the community, there's some in the back as well, if you're interested. And anything that I say today will be written in here. So this project was done up in Pine Grove. It was on the Mitchell Mine Field Break, which is about 10 miles long. It goes from about Chosse Indian Grinding Rocks to the west. It's about 400 acres. This was installed between 2018 and 2022. And you can see the little red mark on there, if you can see that, that's where our project was conducted. Next slide, please.
Was that like the Aldridge property, basically?
Yes. And so what I didn't point out on the map was this is just to the north of Pine Grove. And so it protects that community from a lot of that forested area, just to the north of it.
Who installed the field break? Is it coordination with the Arctic Council?
Yeah, Resource Conservation District. Yeah, the RCD. So as you're probably aware, masthead field breaks look really good when you first install them. They're, you know, everything is taken down to the ground. You pretty much are just left with wood chips. And the photo to the right was a very recent photo of an area just adjacent to our project that was masticated, re-masticated. But even since then, because we're in the spring, we start seeing the remaining shrubs and some trees respouting. And so over time, within a few years, you're going to end up with something like the photo to the right, which was our project site when we started last year. So what we wanted to do is consider kind of what treatment options were out there from the scope of a private homeowner. You know, if you're a large timber company, if you're Cal Fire, you have a lot of other tools in the toolbox to deal with these areas. But for private homeowners, we wanted to look at what was, what were some of the cheapest options? What was actually the most effective and the most efficient? So we looked at some non-chemical options, lopping, flame, and then a ton of different herbicides. One thing to note is that herbicides are going to tell you what they're effective on, but most of those had been studied in areas outside of our region. And so we wanted to get an idea of how well they would work on the plant communities that grow here locally. As you see, we got a lot of interest from the community in organic herbicides. So we wanted to throw that into the mix as well. And last, we compared some over-the-counter products with ones that are more commercially available. So ones that you need an applicator license to purchase versus ones you could go to tractor supplying it off the shelf. In total, we did 33 treatments. Most of these were going to be herbicide applications, but we also did some grazing, some flame treatment, and some lopping. And so here is our project area. It is about 17 acres. And we just split it up to accommodate all the different treatments we wanted to test. So it turned out to be about half an acre per plot. It varied a little bit, but all of our results were then sort of standardized to be what it would be if it was an acre of land, just so that we could compare everything. This is right along Lupe Road, so the community can just drive along there and they can look and see plot to plot and visually be able to determine how effective a treatment To help us and to help people kind of understand or compare how effective a treatment was, we did leave two areas untreated. For the most case across this area, the plant communities were the same, almost all the same species, but there was a slight difference. There was a pine plantation on one side of it, and so we put, you can't really see it because of the zoom window, but we put a control on either end so that we could come back and see what it would have looked like if there was no treatment, and then how to compare each of our plots to it. Next slide, please. So the first one we did was grazing. To do this, we partnered with a local contract grazer. Not only, you know, the benefit of that is that if you're partnering with a local contract grazer, obviously that money is going straight back into your community, but more importantly, a lot of small ruminants or a lot of animals that are in this area have figured out what they're going to want to eat. If you were to bring in animals from down in the valley, they may just be used to eating grass. They may not understand that they can actually target shrubs and other woody biomass.
I don't understand the 48 goats and two sheep. What are the two sheep for?
That's just what the grazer had with their herd. So they, you can run them together and they're going to target mostly the same things. They grazed slightly differently, but there was no strategy behind that. That's just what the grazer had available.
Did the mountain lions eat any?
They did not. We had an Anatolian, so livestock guardian dog was on site the whole time. And they didn't lose any. The grazer put up electric netting wire, and you know, obviously that's not going to keep out a cat, but it kept the animals contained. So it took about the equivalent of 14 days to graze this. They came in with a belly full of hay, and so it took them a couple of days to actually start chewing on what was there. But once they started going, they ate pretty much everything there. I should say also, we found that this one had the most public support because small ruminants are cute. One thing we didn't do is because of the size of this plot, we didn't use cattle. Obviously, that's another type of grazer that we have really commonly around here. My family raises cattle. We take them up to the mixed conifer belt where this was. Cattle do really good targeting deer brush, but the small ruminants, we thought would be better for this study just because of how small the area was and that they were going to go after a lot of other shrubby plants.
You know, question on that, it looks like it did really good, the control, but when you have goats and stuff eating, it's kind of like a temporary thing, unless you kept them there for multiple years, you could probably kill it.
Definitely. Yeah.
Though, we did some of the spraying that actually killed, killed the plants or just stunned them?
In the, sorry, what's your question?
Or spraying, someplace did spraying. Would it kill some of those plants or just kind of stunt their growth?
If, are you talking about in cooperation with grazing?
No.
Oh, just on its own? I'll get to that.
Okay.
Just a minute. So yeah, so the results of grazing was really good. The way that we estimated this was we would stand on all four corners of a plot and we'd look out into it and estimate the percentage of plants that were controlled. One roughly nine months or so after treatment, it's still about at 93% control. So they clipped it all down. But we did notice, like you're saying, with the spring, some of the species, specifically the midron trees, they're starting to respout. And so if you wanted to really kill what was out there, you'd have to do retreatment over time.
Yeah, it seemed like you look at some old ranches where they had goats for years after years, they're kind of trees and grass and that's it.
Yep.
They cleaned it up, but it takes them a while.
It does. I mean, it's, you know, these plants are shrubs and trees. They have huge root systems. They have tons of energy in those roots. So even if you take that above-ground part of the plant off, there's still tons of energy that the plant's going to use to regrow.
But if you kept them there successive years, there's eight, 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 eight. At some point, the plant runs out of energy, is that kind of how it works?
Yeah. Yep. The cost for this was just based on what we paid the contract grazer, so it was about $650 per acre. If you go to the next slide. And so depending on your circumstances, this may or may not be a good option. If you have your own animals, obviously you can do your own grazing, or if you have land but no animals and your neighbor does, you might be able to work out an agreement. I want to give a plug for a website called match.graze. If you're familiar with match.com, kind of on the same lines, this is a way for people who might have livestock or land, but not both, to match up and be able to work out an agreement. So if you have land that you want to have grazed, this could be a way to find a local grazer and work out an agreement with them. Next slide, please. So the next treatment we did was flaming. This is not prescribed fire. This is different. We're not going out and burning everything to a crisp. What we're doing is taking a torch, which you can see in that photo, in a propane tank, and we're waving fire over the material. The idea there is that you're really briefly introducing a really high temperature. It's going to pop those plant cells and cause local cell death and try to kill the plant itself. Obviously.
You don't just enter, you know, go randomly on the ground. You go to a specific bush and.
Right.
And torch it or?
Yeah, so it's kind of what you're seeing there. So yeah, you see a lot of pine needles and stuff like that. We're not targeting that. We're going to all the plants and just hitting any living part of that.
And these are, these, this is an area that's already been cleared to brush, so this is stuff that's come back in one or two years?
Yeah, or four years or so.
Four years, okay.
Yeah, it'd be probably 70% of it's still open, but then you have 30% where you have shrubs coming back. Obviously, this is, this has to be done with any sort of local fire restrictions or ordinance. We did this, I think in May of last year, probably on literally the last day of the year we possibly could have, is right after a rainstorm or even during one. And it costs about, what would that be, $240 or so per acre? So some of that's propane. Labor costs are just purely minimum wage. If you were to hire someone to do that, obviously there'd be other things like maybe overhead, but we didn't factor that in. Next slide, please. Treatment was horrible. So it could have been us doing it, but we tried to cover our ground twice and really hit the whole plant. Right afterwards, it looked really good. We saw a lot of death on the shrubs, but one year afterwards, we only saw about 6% of that material still dead, and the rest of it looked pretty ineffective. Next slide, please. The next treatment we did was lopping. So this is for somebody who doesn't want to use fire, doesn't have any animals, and doesn't want to use any type of herbicides. To be conservative and torturous, I guess, we only used hand tools. So obviously, if you have a pole pruner, if you have a chainsaw, tractor, you're going to go through your land a lot faster. But we did this with a Pulaski, some Loppers, a hatchet, because we wanted to see what'd be the maximum amount of time. So this took about 13 hours to treat one acre and costs about $200 in labor. Next slide.
What did you do with the stuff that you cut?
Just leave it on the ground.
Just leave it on, okay.
So, but actually it looked pretty good. So this is about a year out, and these results are as of about a month ago, when we went out to the field site. So it's still providing about 73% of control of what was there before. We do see just almost the same as in mastication. Because those roots are still alive, you do see some respouting. So if you're a private landowner taking or using this strategy, just like anything else, you're going to be going back in and retreating what you see coming back. And then eventually, you might be able to get complete control of it. Next slide. So the next treatment was sort of building on lopping. We then went back and immediately after, hit any of the cut areas with an herbicide. And we did notice about more control, a little bit more control. So it'd be about 86%. The idea there being that because you have this freshly cut surface, that herbicide's going to get into contact with that, it's going to go down to the root system and actually kill the plant, as opposed to over time just using up the plant's resources. And so this costs about $100 extra per acre.
I had, start this or move into my place. And I got on it right away. Came in with hay.
Yeah.
But I actually, a little more intensive, but I actually pulled it out when it was wet by the roots, and in two years, I stopped it. So that's another way to do it, rather than lop it.
Yep.
Pulled it all the way out.
Yeah, I mean, start this is, it's interesting. The nice thing about it is that seed bank is so short. If you do want to get control of it, you do have a chance of doing that. But yeah, pulling it, spraying it, there are times of the year where you can do targeted grazing on it. The rest of what I'll talk about will be our chemical treatments, because that's kind of the meat and potatoes. There's a lot here. We won't go through everything in the interest of time, but we had a lot of different herbicides we treated or we selected for this. And these were all ones that are easily available for people in this area. Go to the next slide. So some of these are going to be broadly selective, meaning they're only going to go for shrubs and trees, but any type of grass that may be growing there will be unharmed. And then others were non-selective, meaning whatever type of plant they come into contact with, they'll kill. Next slide. Some of these, most of these were what's known as post-emergent, so it's killing a plant that's already growing. Some of them had pre-emergent properties, meaning they'll stay in the soil for a little bit of time and they'll inhibit any seeds that may be there from germinating. We also, so all pesticides, all herbicides have a hazard class, and it goes caution, warning, danger. We tried to select ones that were primarily in that caution area, so the least toxicity, but we did include a few others. And then last, you can't really see it, but there were three organics that we threw into the mix. Next slide, please.
So why do you call them organics, per se? I mean, because the other ones are probably organic materials as well.
The other ones are all synthetically made.
Okay, so you're distinguishing a natural product versus.
Yes.
Something that's synthesized.
Yeah, so for instance, one of them, I don't know why it's called this, but it's called a green gobbler. It's essentially vinegar. It's acetic acid.
All right.
Yep. So the other thing we compared were the same exact chemical, but different brands. And so some of these, you're going to need a license to get, others you can get off the shelf. So we did notice a slight difference. Even though it's the same chemical, there may be something with the other ingredients that inhibit its performance. And last, what we tried to do were two different application methods. So one is called your standard foliar treatment. This is probably what most people think of when they're applying herbicides. You're going to the plant, you're covering the whole plant, all the leaves with herbicide. It's effective, but obviously you're going to take more time to cover the whole plant. Our farm advisor, Scott Onetto, is a proponent of this newer technique that's called the drizzle, the drizzle technique. In both methods, you're putting out the exact same amount of product, same amount of herbicide on the landscape. With the foliar treatment, you're diluting that herbicide into maybe five times the amount of water. In the drizzle technique, it's just more concentrated and you're shooting a single little stream. And so anywhere that that plant is hit with that concentrated herbicide will be enough theoretically to kill it. And so in our practice, it took about a quarter of the time to treat one acre of plants.
Question on that, you know, you're talking about volumes.
Yes.
If you, I guess my question is, it talks about the foliar was a lot more gallons. Is that gallons of spray or gallons, you know, is one a concentrate and one's like a, oh, basically a watered-down spray?
Yeah. So in either, either way, you're going to take a bottle of herbicide, which is just concentrated product, and you're going to dilute it into water in your backpack sprayer. And so one, you're diluting it almost five times, and the other is way more concentrated. So you're always going to be adding water. But for the drizzle technique, you're adding significantly less water.
I guess, is one using less spray than the other?
No, same amount.
Okay.
Yep. Same amount of herbicide chemical, less water.
So one you're, one you're putting on very concentrated, and one you're mixing a whole bunch of water, but the amount of spray going on is basically the same?
Yes.
Okay.
So the only other thing I'll show is that we did compare the, some of the same treatments, but in the spring versus the fall. And that's what this is showing. Next slide, please. So as far as the results, I'm going to go over the ones that were performed the best. So one of our best performers was, was called a tank mix. So there are three different chemicals that we put in. It kind of covered all your bases. And if we did a foliar application, so painting the whole plant, we got about 93% control. Fortunately, the photos don't really do it justice, but as opposed to using this drizzle application, we still had about 73% control with about a quarter of the amount of time and then a quarter of the amount of labor costs to apply that treatment. Here's another one, almost the exact same levels of control for the foliar versus a drizzle. The difference is it's a single chemical, and it was only one of the chemicals that we put in the previous tank mix. And so really, that was kind of the star of the show. And so up here, you could probably get by with just using that same, that single chemical.
I didn't see the, I see the Garlon IV on your list of chemicals, but of herbicides, but I didn't see the others. MSO and Nine Mat, what are those?
MSO, so that's actually, it's not an herbicide, it's a surfactant. It just makes the herbicides stick to the plant better. Yep. Next slide, please.
Do you know how long some of these herbicides stick around in case animals or livestock wanted to?
Like re-treatment or re-entry time?
Well, yeah, I mean, would.
No life.
Say livestock were to come and start grazing or, you know, other animals, you know?
Yeah.
And the fate of it in the environment?
Yep. So we selected the, we selected ones that had low re-entry periods. So anywhere, usually around a few hours, you would want to keep people or other mammals, including livestock, out of that area.
For how long?
For a few hours, so like.
Just a few hours?
Half a day, yeah.
So after one, one or two seasons.
Oh, yeah.
It'll all be gone?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
So there were some that, again, had pre-emergent properties, meaning they'll stay in the soil. But, and I can't, I'm not that much of an herbicide expert, but as far as I know, it wouldn't be a hazard to mammals.
Okay.
The last one I'll show you is a different name, but it's the exact same chemical, is Garlon IV, the last one that I showed you. This is interesting because this is something that you or I, or anybody who doesn't have a pesticide applicator's license, can go and order online or they can get a tractor supply. And so it's easier to get and it provides pretty much the same control. We did notice a little bit less with our drizzle technique. That could just be because of that one site. It could be that there's something in the formula that makes it a little less potent than the one that you need a license for, but still pretty good if you do a foliar application.
Brush talks says it all.
Exactly, yeah. So really quickly, I'll talk about organics. In short, they don't work up here. They, the one that really stood out was the acetic acid. It was the most dangerous chemical we got, because even though it's vinegar, it's concentrated vinegar. What you eat on your salad or something is probably like 3%, and this is 20%. It costs the most, it was about $400 for a bottle, and it provided about 6% control on the landscape. So we wouldn't recommend it. So here are all the results, there's a lot here. What's going to be best for your property, and this might be a cooperative extension answer, but it's going to depend on what your needs are and what you have available. As far as grazing, if you have access to animals, if you own them, or if you have a neighbor who has them, and you have the time, they're going to do a really good job with successive years of controlling that vegetation. Flame treatment is not one that we would recommend for any circumstance, it just did not do a very good job. Again, that's different than prescribed fire, so you could work with Cal Fire, and that could be another option that we didn't test for this. Lopping, if you want to go that route and you want to put in the equity or the sweat equity, I guess, that's going to be effective over time, but it'd probably take a couple of years. And then really, the star of the show was Garlon IV, or also known as Brush Talks. That did a really effective job at controlling the growth that was out there. Last, I'll say is, this was funding that we got through Cal Fire that went through our Amador Resource Conservation District, and they funded us for this project.
How long would it take you to retreat the whole Mitchell Mine Field Break with Brush Talk?
Yeah, so that's actually going on right now. So based on the results of this study, the RCD is, is working with the pesticide applicator. And they're going to be using, I think they're using Garlon IV, or it's actually that, that original tank mix that showed you. I think they're still going to go with that option. But I don't know how long it's going to take them, but we could do the math. If it took about two hours per acre, and there's about 400 acres, so I guess that'd be about 800 man-hours per acre, not including travel and everything else that would go into that. But I, but I don't think they're planning on spraying the whole field break. They're going to use different management strategies in different areas.
Okay.
So the other thing I'll highlight is that this work was done up in our mixed conifer belt, but a lot of the plants that were growing in that community also exist down in areas like I own in the chaparral. So we had Manzanita, we had some Toya, we had. So we had Manzanita, we had some Toyon, we had Yerba Santa. So any of the results that we saw up there would probably be, translate well down slow to Ione.
So are these re-treatments, you think, are they going to be sufficient to maintain it going forward in perpetuity? Or do you have to, like periodically go in every ten years and just do a, you know, major cut and?
I think we're going to have to wait and see. We continue to go back and evaluate it, because the results I show you are at that point in time. As you go back every year, you're going to see differences in what's coming back. And I think it also depends on where that fuel break is when you start the treatment, because anything you kill with an herbicide is still going to be standing, but it's just going to be dead. And so that's one area where, like a lopping treatment will actually remove that ladder fuel.
Okay.
One thing I would say too is, you know, the grazing, I mean, I like grazing, but it shows ninety-three percent control. Whereas, you know, the herbicide, you're looking ninety, say ninety-three percent, but one is control and one is probably killing it, I would think. Would you say that's probably a fair statement generally?
Yeah, I mean, that's the thing, and that's another difference I should mention between organic and synthetic herbicides, is that with an herbicide, you're putting that product on the plant, it's being absorbed by the plant and going down to the root system and killing it. And that's really why we're seeing all that regrowth. And so grazing, you're going and you're lopping the top, but you still have all that energy on the landscape.
Unless you do it for a number of years, in a couple of years, it'll be right back.
Yeah, that's why you see areas where, like, we had the electrifier, and we had all those trees that were torched out there, and then all of those oaks respouted, and then it was primed to be, to burn again, right? Or the butte fire, then the electrifier, so.
Yeah, like that mountain live oak, that stuff just, yeah, it just goes wild.
Yeah, so that is a benefit of herbicides.
This is pretty interesting what you did, though. I mean, it's pretty cool.
Thank you. I don't know if there are any other questions?
No, this is real good. It'd be good to see if you could maintain the fuel breaks this way, because they have to be maintained from now on. I mean, they definitely work, and I think the insurance industry sees the value too, so. Yeah, especially if there was a fire and it has stopped it, like the butte fire.
Yeah, well, and the field break where we're working, I don't think it's been used for an active fire, but to the south of Pine Grove, I think is sort of a twin, another field break, and I believe that was used in the butte fire and the electrifier. So there is reason to have them and to preserve them.
Yeah, it might have saved Pine Grove and that piney area, that one that they put in down off Tibbou Road, that country. Is there any member of the public that'd like to comment on this item? Well, we thank you. It was pretty informative. It was good.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Moving on down, next item is six D. This is General Services Administration update on the city's impacts relative to animal control services.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, John Hopkins, General Services Director.
Evan Jacobs, Director, Animal Control.
Hey, we wanted to provide you an update of what we've been, of the last year of dealing with the cities in regards to animal control services, and importantly enough, in a couple of days, we've got another meeting with the cities. And when I clarify the cities, the chiefs, that's the Chief of Sutter Creek, Chief of Jackson, and Chief John Alfred, who's here, actually in the audience here, from the city of my own. In regards to the information that you have, and a reminder to the board, back in May of 2023, we started this with numbers that included looking at human population data. And those numbers resulted in much higher figures that the cities would need to compensate the county for. And so what you have in your packet today is what are the numbers that we use currently today, which are those numbers that are just based on the current animal population. And those numbers were significantly less. It shows a split between the cities with the human population data set of about sixty, forty, but when we looked at animal populations strictly, it went to about a seventy-five, twenty-five split. And we were trying to figure out why that was. And one reason is that there are more animals typically in the unincorporated areas, livestock and stuff like that, unlike the urban areas. And we also don't have the city's numbers, their impacts, which is important to understand, of their law enforcement, of them handling their own animal services within their respective jurisdictions. So the numbers that we're looking at here are the numbers in that spreadsheet that I provided to you, which are those animal, the cost per animal for those services. As I said, we're meeting with the three cities. We've talked with Amidal City too, but they're so small that the mayor, every time, you know, we're not too concerned about Amidal City, as it's pretty marginal. The city of Plymouth, I have not heard from her. And I incorporated in here a letter from the law enforcement as well, which is our own sheriff's department that provides those services to Plymouth. But they also had given the city of Plymouth a, what I would refer to as a Dear John letter, because they were looking at alternative services as well. I don't know where that's at today with the city of Plymouth, but they look like they're doing their own thing. However, that's an interesting dynamic, because since we don't have a contract with the city of Plymouth, and the sheriff calls us, we've agreed with the sheriff that we would respond to that, and when we do, and Evan sends the city a bill, they've been paying that bill. So I'm assuming that that's just sort of the way that's going to go there.
That it would prohibit Plymouth city residents from bringing any animals to the shelter, correct?
Well, we'll talk about that. When I look at the history, originally back in May, and I think it was Supervisor Crew and maybe some of the other board members realized that it was a little short period of time before the budget for the cities. And so you asked us to continue to negotiate with the cities, which we did. But you gave a hard deadline of the end of the year, of end of 2023. But in November, we brought that information back to you, and you said, at that time, you directed staff to continue to negotiate with the cities as best as possible. And I know that, maybe John will get up here and talk, but we've got good relationships with the chiefs. I think it's more political sometimes, and it comes down to money with these services. I do talk about in my memo about the differences in approach, and hopefully you've read that, because we've had things all over the map, suggestions from cities, everything from raise your fees to control costs to increase euthanasia. We actually reviewed our cost, but as you know, that was, and we made some changes, but it was marginal in the overall picture of being able to recoup cost through fees with animal control.
You know, I guess, question on that as far as, City of Plymouth will no longer be processing dog licenses?
That's the note that we got from the city of Plymouth, yeah.
So I don't know, so like in a city, so basically county licenses dogs to the county? So if the city of Plymouth is licensing dogs in the city of Plymouth, those fees go to the city, or are they going to the county, or?
Well, what they, no, they go to the county. That's the arrangement we've always had. And when you look at the numbers that I've given you, all of the revenues that we take in, those costs are less those revenues, so we account for the revenues. However, if the city's going to do their own thing, they have to collect dog license fees. It's unlawful to do what the city's talking about there if they're going to run their own show. But since we do it for them currently, that's okay. But if they decide to do their own thing, I think it was Supervisor Brown that asked Margaret at the time what you were going to, what she was going to do, and she told you, well, there's alternatives to that. She's also said that to law enforcement, and that's fine. We're fine with them doing their own thing. But if you're going to do your own thing, you cannot not collect dog license if you're going to operate on your own. That's not lawful.
They can, okay, they just can't say we're not doing dog licenses.
State law requires it.
Okay.
Can't do that. So I talk about the law a little bit. Just as a reminder, I brought up the Health and Safety Code, and I brought up the government code. And back in November, when the staff was here and we were talking about it, council also let the board know that if we provide services to the cities, it's not that they may, or they get to negotiate, they shall pay. That's very clear in the government code. I talk about fiscal responsibilities in my memo as well, and, you know, we're subsidizing the cities in a lot of different ways. But in this case, looking at those two numbers, if you look at human population data set numbers, it was about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars annually collectively with the cities. If you look at animal numbers, it's about two hundred and forty thousand dollars annually. And with the last meeting that we had with the chiefs, you know, I was, I realized money is tough and tight with the cities. I had suggested, and I think I told Chuck this as well, that, you know, just try to get to a point where you can at least even fund an officer, which is a hundred K. Now, I think today, our numbers and our relationship with the three cities, it's a lot better, and they understand. In fact, John was just telling me that the number, I think, for the city of Ione's about seventy-seven thousand. They're good with that number, but he can speak to that if he gets up here and talks. I will emphasize that the numbers that we looked at, and my last bit here for a solution, was instead of debating all of these numbers and who's going to do what, and how we should run our show, a very simple solution is just to take our animal count numbers, divide it by the budget, and you come up with a cost per animal. And if somebody from the city of Jackson drops off an animal for us to care for, we turn around and we bill them what that average cost is. That way, everybody's paying the same, and we're providing all the same services to everybody, and there's no argument whatsoever about who's doing what and when and where.
That would be like an à la carte type of approach?
It's to provide the same services that we're doing.
Pay as you go?
You pay as you go. And actually, when I was talking with John outside, it kind of helps with real numbers, because it gets them to a point, sort of a maximum, maybe not to exceed that number that we're calculating in our spreadsheet.
That's that eight sixty-two fourteen number you're talking about?
Yep, treats everybody the same. And I don't have to worry about anybody making suggestions on how we run our business. We don't have to worry about data that we're collecting and trying to argue over any flawed data. And I will tell you that that data has gotten really good, and it's not, it would be marginal if there's any errors in any of that data today.
But you do have to update that on a yearly basis as costs normally rise.
We do, and I will add that that number does not include, about six months ago, the CAO graciously allow, he recognized the strain on staff, and gave us a tech position, which is an impact from the cities. That position's at the full burden rate's just a little over seventy-two thousand dollars annually. That is not included in here, because we didn't have the numbers, and we don't have an approved budget yet. So, and if we get an officer, that hundred thousand plus isn't in here either, so those costs would go up per animal. And I think I make note of that on the first page in my memo, where I stated that blah, 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 that, you know, that to accommodate the city's impact, a factor that will inevitably escalate the operational budget and consequently raise cost of the cities upon adding staff. So that's what I'm talking about there. That it's going to add it as we continue to support the cities. Or they can do their own thing.
Yeah, I would think too, I look at how you manage the dog numbers and see what you have there. I mean, if you've got a dog that's pretty obviously vicious, you know, that's that dog's problem.
It is, and we've been, when we meet with the chiefs, we all understand that some of the cities, I mean Plymouth is maybe eleven hundred, Sutter Creek's twenty-six, twenty-seven hundred, maybe, Amidal City, I think is below two hundred and two people. Those cities, you know, they just don't have the population to generate the revenue to support the basic fundamental municipal services that are asked upon us today. That's the crux of a lot of it. That's why we get into a rub is money most of the time. That's why there's a conflict.
What do you do, these are ordinary cases where the animals are dropped off at the shelter, but what do you do if we respond, like to Ione, the one time where there was a cat that had significant injuries? Are there's a consultation with the city on what to do, and then make a decision? And if there are surgeries and everything else, the city is billed for that?
Yes, they're billed directly for it, and we only respond to those cities, Jackson, Sutter Creek, Ione, when requested through law enforcement. Otherwise, they're handling their own business themselves. So it's the animals, the biggest impact are the animals that are coming through our front door.
So, John?
Yes, sir.
I looked at the averages, the average column, and added them up for all the cities and multiplied it by your eight sixty-two figure. And that comes in pretty, you know, a lot higher than what it would cost to just fund one position. So are we funding one position, or are we funding more? How is that supposed to work?
When you say are we, is the county funding?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're funding.
Because we need to fund, well, we need more staff, right?
Right, it's about two, that two hundred and forty thousand is roughly about two and a half positions. So we're funding one of those now.
I got a figure closer to three hundred and thirty-two thousand.
Yeah, that's based on that animal per cost charge, yeah. And that's why I think maybe, like, well, John can talk to it. I think that's probably why it would be better with the data that we use, that we, that they use that data that we use for animal over the last ten years of an average. Because I think eventually, at a per animal cost charge, it may run the cities more. And we actually discovered that, like, with the city of Jackson, looking at some of that data, in some years, just on a per animal cost, it would be seventy thousand. In other years, it's a hundred and forty. It doubled in cost. One of the reasons that we went down this approach originally of using data sets using human population is because it's fairly consistent and easy to budget that way. But when you have an ebb and flow and you're using animal numbers, yeah, you're going to, you're going to have high and low years. And there's no other, it's a direct cost, but you're going to have high and low years.
Do you have any idea roughly how long most dogs stay in that pound for their adopted, gone, whatever?
Typically, that's called the length of stay period. I do not know that off the top of our head. We don't euthanize for time or space, so our length of stay numbers are going to be higher than if we didn't, you know, if we set a hard date for, you know, five days, you know? So I don't have an average. I can work through the system and see what that looks like on a, you want a dog basis, dog, cat, or just per animal in the shelter?
I was just curious.
Well, there is a legal minimum.
Right, there is the legal minimum of a stray weight hold period, seventy-two hours plus the day of impound. We do four days plus the day of impound, so we're really.
Do you have much problem adopting, like, some of pit bull, pit bull crosses?
No, we do a basic evaluation, you know, and so as long as they pass a basic evaluation, we'll put that animal up for adoption.
I mean, do people readily adopt them, or are they a hard sale?
Yeah, there's, you know, there's people who like pit bulls, and there's people who like, you know, the bully breeds. And, you know, not as many as most, you know, some people are afraid of them, and rightfully so, but we don't usually have a huge problem. And then we'll try and work with rescue partners as well, just to get some of those, you know, harder to place ones that might not have the temperament, but, you know, they just need that, you know, that more home environment.
Okay.
So I know you're going to ask probably for public comments, stuff like that, but the purpose is, is that, like I said, we've got a meeting in two days with the cities, and in the end, I'd like to know what you guys' direction and how you'd like to proceed, have staff proceed in talking with the cities. But we'll leave it open for right now to others.
Well, I have, you know, had some discussions with the city of Sutter Creek, and there's some concern, a little pushback. I think, you know, the approach is to continue to talk and maybe ease into something, you know? If, right now, if you use this figure of eight sixty-two, that's a lot more expensive, it's almost twice as expensive if you just had a flat rate. At least from what I'm seeing, I mean, it's pretty expensive.
Well, and also, you have to understand from the city's perspective, where they're looking, law enforcement is looking to be a little more active in what their role is, I believe, so that if you are more active with your citizens and you're controlling more of those animal control services, or handling those more yourself, then you can keep that number low, but it still treats. keep that number low, but it still treats everybody the same.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, uh, concerned about the actual, uh, you know, a fee per animal, but maybe, maybe it needs to start off a little lower at this point, cause that's, uh, that's quite a bit. I mean, if you wanna fund one position, you know, or is it two positions?
Well, my suggestion under the last chiefs meeting was for Ione City, uh, Ione, Sutter Creek and Jackson to just even, to make a suggestion to us to at least fund an officer.
Okay.
Uh, to ease into that. But we had these conversations a year ago, and so they have had a year to deal with their budgets and have these conversations. I think Ione has, you know, you can hear from John, he's done some calculations too, and you can hear from, from that chief. I think it's, it's, they're getting a lot more pushback from the, their councils and, and the, the political side of things.
Yeah, I think we've given them more than enough time to adjust and so the county's absorbed for another year of those costs. Uh, I think, um, cities need to do better job working with their citizens, um, to take care of their pets. Uh, this, Ione News and Safety Site, I'm always seeing dogs on there where they come on and say, somebody's little critters walking around on the street and, um, that's part of it. I mean, that, I, I like this because most of the time, I would say seventy percent of the time, you can see that the owner is, um, has been able to reconnect with the, with their pet. But, um, those ones that aren't reconnected, they probably end up in the shelter, unfortunately.
Well, fortunately, one of the chief, like I said, John's here today, uh, they take an active role.
And that's what you need.
Yeah.
And statistically, when posting something like that for dogs, less than, they're, they're found less than four blocks away from their house. So if you have someone willing to take a little moment out of their time just to walk the dog up, or even the police department, we, you know, um, doing that, you, it avoids those animals coming into us and incurring whatever, uh, costs they, they might show up with.
Yeah, the one that thought her dog was home though and went out in the dark and, and petted her animal in the, uh, that was actually in its doghouse, uh, unfortunately it was a possum, so, yeah.
That was better than the skunk.
Yes.
Maybe before you, you leave, um, is there any members of the public like to comment on this issue?
How about Chief Alfred?
You'll be next.
God, I know you were gonna call me out like that. So, I, I gotta definitely say this, I, you know, working with John, all three cities have been coming together. We've had darn near monthly meetings, um, for quite a while now, and I think we are, um, coming to a, a solution here shortly. Um, I'm actually excited about the next meeting, which is, uh, Thursday. Not only is it gonna be the three chiefs with John and Evan, but it's also gonna be all three city managers are supposed to be at that meeting as well. And we got to that point where we decided to bring all the city managers in with us because obviously they're the decision makers. So I think, uh, I think we're moving forward in a very positive way. I can tell you this, I, I can't speak for all the cities, all three cities, but we've all kinda articulated that we have no problem paying our, our share, okay? We understand how it works with the, uh, with the county, with the city budgets. It's tough, it's tough on everybody. We understand the county's gotta absorb the cost for animal, animal control. And so I don't think that's, that's not a big issue for Ione. We're not sitting there saying, no, we're not gonna pay for it, you guys do it. We know we need to pay our fair share. And so, again, I think we're moving forward nicely and, um, a lot of what John just said is, is really good. Um, I think the, the base fee is something that our, uh, at least my city manager is not gonna complain a whole lot about if we do put a cap on it. So, talk about capping it, so. Do you have any questions for me?
I just don't wanna go backwards with the city managers because we're dealing with basically three relatively new city managers.
Absolutely, and that's...
Their first inclination is gonna be, we don't wanna pay for that.
Well, and that's the nice thing is, um, all three chiefs, we've been talking to our city managers about the issue and keeping them informed. And that's why now we're at that point where they're, again, they're all three new. Let's get them in the room so we can discuss this and, uh, come to a solution, so. Any questions?
Uh, I think, I think we, I like that you're working on it, talk about it. I think we come to something that's probably equitable for everybody.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning Supervisor Onetta and...
Morning.
Board members and staff. I'd like to say a couple of statements in the staff report are incorrect. The city of Plymouth did not say they didn't want animal control.
Well, I, what did you, repeat that, please?
The city of Plymouth did not say they did not want county animal control.
Okay.
The last time I was here...
Can you identify yourself first?
I'm the city manager for the city of Plymouth.
And your name?
Margaret Roberts.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. The last time I was here, the board of directors requested that I meet with Chuck Eyley and I did have that meeting. And since then, there's been no, no outreach from the county to me, asking me to meet with animal control, either by phone, by email, or any contact whatsoever. So I had no idea that the county animal control has been meeting with the chiefs or anybody else. So I would've had no idea that these meetings with the chiefs have been happening. I don't have a chief, so that would've, it would've been me that should've been meeting and they've not reached out to me. So the city of Plymouth has just been not included in these meetings. Um, another thing is that, yes, the sheriff's department has noticed us for not moving forward with the contract, but there's a clause in the contract that they have to give us so much notice, otherwise the contract rolls over. And we know, and the sheriff's office knows, that the contract needs to be renegotiated. And so that notice was given with both parties knowing that that notice was going to be given, knowing that the contract needs to be renegotiated. Yes, we talked about an RFP process for sheriff services to be done. We have to do our due diligence and make sure that our citizens are getting the best service for the best dollar. The sheriff's office knows this and they've been notified and they've been in contact for the best thing. And we know that our best dollar is most likely going to be the sheriff's, sheriff's office because they're the only ones that can provide dispatch and they're gonna be the fastest ones that can respond to our city.
Yeah, real- realistically, I mean, that's, that's just really where it's at, I mean...
Correct. So we know that we're gonna renegotiate with the, in reality, we're most likely gonna renegotiate with the sheriff's office and we know our costs for that are gonna go up.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I mean, it's up, it's up to you, you and the city, but, I mean, I don't think I'd be putting out, I mean, you can, not saying that you can't, but putting an RFP is kinda...
We're not, we are not gonna put out an RFP now. We are gonna put out to see if any of the other cities in the county are interested in providing services and go from there.
Yeah.
But we know in reality where it's gonna end up, most likely. Anyway, the staff reports says that we've been unresponsive and again, I'll say that there's been no outreach to us whatsoever. The meeting with Chuck Eyley and myself...
I think there'd been some outreach, I mean, uh...
Not to myself from the county since the last time I spoke here.
Okay, all right, not, not whatsoever, but not, not recently then?
Not since, not since I spoke here last year.
Okay.
And the meeting with Chuck Eyley and I, we left that meeting stating that the city would pay, um, a hundred percent of true costs for any kind of response to the city and the city would approve any response to the city, or if the sheriff's department called them out, we would be responsible for the cost. And we have paid all of our bills within about fourteen days of receiving the invoice. So we've been very responsive in making sure we paid our bills very quickly. Here we are again, up against budget time with dollar amounts coming true. We're two weeks away from approving our budget for this year and I did, I did include money for animal control services, but not at this cost because this is the first time I've seen this number is when the staff record, report, when the agenda came out last Friday. So it was a little bit of a shocking number. The city of Plymouth is not opposed to paying its fair share and it's not opposed to paying a flat fee. But I, I do have some questions. Is this a flat fee or is, or are there additional charges for how long the animal is there? Um, is this cost gonna go up this year if they hire the new employee? If the animal needs surgery, are those costs gonna be on top of the eight sixty-two fourteen?
From what John said, I, I would assume, and he probably talked, talked about it, it's a flat fee. Now, as far as maybe next year, if you have additional position, that would, I don't see it being added in this year, probably next year it would be added in.
So it's, it's hard for the city of Plymouth to have, to have this money included in this year's budget when we haven't been included in any of those meetings and they're meeting again on Thursday. My schedule for Thursday is packed already. Um, so again, we're gonna be excluded from this meeting. I don't have anybody to send in my place. I only have one other department head on staff and three other people in city hall that are working, one in finance, one in planning and one as my deputy city clerk. I don't have anybody else to send in my place.
Well, let's look for a solution. Possibly we can get another date and you can meet with Mr. Eyley and Mr. Hopkins, would that work?
That would be great. We're not opposed, like I said, we're not opposed to pay, paying our fair share and we're not, and I said this last year, we're not opposed to pay, paying our fair share. And I agree that the data should be based on the animals, which is what I said last year. We don't wanna be excluded like we've been excluded in this, in this last year. And I don't believe that was done by accident.
I don't, I, I wouldn't agree, agree with that.
They've been meeting all year long and I've received not one email inviting me to those meetings.
Well, maybe, um, could you address that, John, if you, if you wouldn't mind?
Um, first of all, I, I do now remember you, you met with, with Margaret, Eyley, Chuck Eyley, the CAO met with Margaret. But the sheriff's office, uh, we were targeting the, the chiefs so that they could get a better understanding of law enforcement because of their numbers in dispute with the county's numbers, uh, i- in regards to their responses to animal control services and trying to figure all that out. In the cities, uh, with the, respect to the city of Plymouth, the sheriff's office provides that law enforcement. The sheriff did not want to tackle animal control at this time and include that as part of the contract negotiations.
So what she's saying is correct then?
Right, so I think that's why there's that, this delay in actually speaking directly with the city manager. We haven't been doing that, we've been meeting with the law enforcement folks. And so the sheriff did not want to include that in their negotiations at the time with the city of Plymouth.
Yeah, but that's, that's kinda leaving her in the dark then.
It, it is, but that's not my, by my choice. So we will get you included to the party.
Well, law enforcement services, I think, are separate from animal control, in, in my opinion.
Well, they're, no, they're not. We respond to those, those, uh, cities, they're the lead agency for when they call us.
Okay, as far as, all right, okay.
Yeah, and so in regards to the other numbers that come through the...
They're paying the bill, so there should've been a little bit of communication on that.
Yes. Now, I did send Margaret an email...
Or might pay the bill.
Yeah, I sent, you know, lengthy email in October, October twenty-seventh. I went back and looked at my emails, I never got a response. Um, I know that Evan also had a conversation, I believe, if you wanna speak to that.
I think we can probably leave it here, but it sounds like...
Right.
The communication could've been better.
Absolutely.
Probably on our part, maybe a little on her part too.
Absolutely, I don't have a problem with that. So it also doesn't change with what Margaret's saying about the, the, uh, cost per animal. This is a flat fee that we're talking about that includes all the services except for field services when law enforcement calls us out of the shop to go respond to something. Those are the bills that you've been paying, but it's not the bills that we're talking about, the animals that come through the shelter, the sheltering services. That's what the eight sixty-two fourteen is.
Okay, once that animal hits a shelter...
Right, and without getting into, and the, the chiefs know this, without getting into, you know, the husky that's costing us six hundred dollars to spay or neuter, uh, or, or medical treatment for an animal, you know, all those variances of where we just flat fee, treating everybody the same, we'll get to a limit and, and maybe what we'll do is, uh, based on those animal numbers on the last ten years of statistics, the agreement will, at least what I'm thinking now, is it's a flat fee, not to exceed that for this fiscal year, and then next year we'll regroup and to figure out what those numbers are.
That'd probably be helpful for the cities, I'd think.
Right, right, and it's fair across the board.
Okay.
Okay? Ho- hopefully that provides some...
That helps.
Okay.
That help?
Yes, do we know when this is gonna go into effect so I can try to amend my budget that's gonna be approved in two weeks?
I think we're still looking for direction for the overall program and what the board is comfortable with, with applying. That's why it's still very fuzzy right now and, um, we're, we need some direction, so we can get that question answered too, how about that?
Based on the meeting that's gonna happen on Thursday, probably will go into effect very, very soon, correct? I'm trying to give her some kinda timeline.
Well, yeah, I, I would, maybe the first of the fiscal year, which is in a month.
Yeah, I would think that would make sense.
Yeah, that... I think I'd be fine with that, um, rest the board, seems okay.
Well, it sounds like the cities that you, you know, the, the ones you spoke with were in agreement with doing the flat fee per animal?
We, we haven't raised that yet with them.
Oh, okay.
The eight sixty-two, no, but I, I don't think it's gonna be a hard push at all to say, look, we're gonna charge you a flat fee, not to exceed what we've got in our data for that last ten years of average. So, for example, Ione, I think, is at seventy-seven thousand. So the idea would be, we're gonna charge you eight sixty-two fourteen, not to exceed seventy-seven thousand for the next fiscal year and see how that shakes out with the, with the, with all of the data and the numbers.
You know, and I think I'd, I'd look at the intake and try to keep costs down as much as reasonably possible.
Well, I think that's why...
Cause that's gonna, that's gonna reflect on the next year, in the next year, you know, as, as how that shelter's operated.
Yes, and that's why, like, with the city of, of, you know, Amater City and, and the city of Plymouth, they're a little bit, um, at a disadvantage because we don't, they don't have their own police department to advocate that for and to really get that message out. I know, just my experience with, with Evan and, and John here, uh, Ione takes a very active approach to animal control. So they keep their costs down, at least from what I can tell, and it's pretty consistent too. Jackson has more of a ebb and flow. Uh, Sutter Creek is a little more consistent, but a little higher percentage wise because I don't think they have, uh, you know, a full-time chief there. I think Jim's kinda part-time.
Yeah, I think there could be the opportunity, maybe if, if a police chief or officers or deputy says, oh yeah, that's John's dog, he's down the road, hey, John, come get your dog, or take down, give John back his dog, you can probably keep those costs down, saying, up, we got a dog, it's going to animal control.
Right.
Costs are gonna go up.
And unfortunately, it would be somebody like Margaret in her hood to actively say, hey, look, take control of your dogs, license your dogs, span neuter your dog, you know, keep them off the highways, all, all the things that go along with animal control. So, uh, the cities, basically the approaches, put it back up on the cities to take that active account, but yet if it comes through our doors, we're gonna charge you for it.
I would, in the future, realizing that the sheriff's department is the one that takes care of a lot of the, um, animal control issues, at least initially, um, try to keep Margaret in the loop as much as you can on, on those things.
It's been a, um, you know, we work with the sheriff, the sheriff's the county, right? So, um, I've had conversations with the under sheriff and the sheriff and they, uh, in, in fact, when Martin was sheriff, we actually had an agreement with the sheriff to where they, they're not even handling barking dogs anymore. And they continue that today, they don't wanna handle it. However, you go to the city of Ione, Chief Alver, he's gonna deal with that. Um, that puts the city of who they're contracting with at, at a greater disadvantage bec... That puts the city of who they're contracting with at, at a greater disadvantage because if they call us to go deal with a barking dog when the city could easily handle that, then there's not that charge. So I'll talk with Margaret about how they wanna handle all of that, because at some point, I need to sit down with the sheriff's department, city of Plymouth, and animal control and figure out who's on first here. Because we have told them we will respond, because we got into a little conflict with the sheriff's office last year when we said, look, we're not responding, we don't have a contract with the city. And they're like, that's unacceptable. So it's putting me in the middle. And I'm not gonna get, I'm not gonna be there.
Ione's got a good handle on it. They finally have more complaints about the cow fire shooting range than barking dogs.
Yeah. So I'll, I will, I'll take the, the lead and, and.
A little more communication.
Bridge that gap. Yeah.
I think, I think I did ask you, it's been a while back about, you said, basically, you'll, city of Plymouth, Margaret, kind of like just offline, so maybe you should've contacted her, she should've contacted you, but just talk one another.
I, I, I can handle that.
Okay.
So other than that, I'm looking for direction. If the board likes, uh, the idea of approaching the cities, uh, Thursday of just saying, here's a flat fee, uh, limit not to exceed what we've shown in our, our spreadsheet.
And that would show them kind of, it's, it's not a spongy number saying, you bring in so many dogs, that's what you're looking at. Your dog numbers stay down, your numbers stay down.
It, it gives them that opportunity.
Yeah, okay. I, I like that.
So, John, where do you?
To govern themselves.
Where'd you get the seventy-seven thousand for the city of Ione per year?
If you look in the spreadsheet, the very last, last column and, and rows and columns there, you'll see an average of ten years, uh, of data, and you'll see a cost per animal there. And, I'm sorry, the second to the last, you'll see a dollar amount there above that. I think it was seventy-seven thousand.
Okay, alright. Well, it's hard to see anything in this table.
It's, is a lot of data.
I got the double, double glasses going on here. Hey, it works.
And that's even printed on eleven by seventeen.
A little bigger might be better next time.
A little what?
Bigger.
Bigger?
Bigger.
Okay.
That'd be helpful. I agree.
Okay. So it won't exceed that.
There's over three years, right?
Uh, we looked at it several ways. It seemed like when we looked at it over a three-year period of time, it actually raised the cost for some of the cities, instead of looking at it over a ten-year period.
He's saying seventy-seven thousand, that'd be like, that'd be like the three-year cost, seventy-six, eight thirty-one. Then you got a ten-year cost that was down a little bit.
And, and frankly, uh, when we looked at the animal, animals per cost per animal versus just the human population, Ione's cost actually went down and Jackson's went up, even though they have a, uh, a lower population in, as far as people.
Cities understand, though, that it's pretty tough on our employees. If we have less employees that have to do all the euthanases, that's, it's pretty tough.
Yeah, compassion fatigue. In fact, we were talking about it outside. The, the laws have actually even changed. When you, when you euthanize animals now, you have to do that with two people. So that cost goes up. You have to have one to hold the animal and one to euthanize, one to inject.
You know, one question I do have, if you look at the ten-year cost, it's a lot less than the three-year cost. Is that cause of, did COVID ramp up the cost? Are those costs coming down now?
Yes. They're starting to, we're starting to see a greater number of, of animals, which is gonna lower that cost.
I guess we look at it every year, they'll, they'll recoup some of that lower cost as we go along, hopefully.
Yeah.
Okay.
Until we, well.
I think, I'm good.
Okay.
So like, you have enough direction, I'd think?
I do.
Uh, any other members of public like to comment on this? Well, thank you, John. Uh, we're gonna move on now. Well, thank you. Item six E, Public Health, presentation regarding water safety, Marcy Harlan, Public Health. Hello, Marcy?
Hello, I'm Marcy Harlan from Amador County Public Health, and I'm excited to be here to share with you some work that we're doing in the community around water safety. May is National Water Safety Month. Before we get started, I have, um, this lovely picture that you may recognize, a lake in our county, and I'm just gonna ask you if you could think, um, about a really hot summer day in Amador County. We all know they're coming, um, maybe it's over a hundred degrees and you wanna go cool off near one of our wonderful, beautiful lakes, or maybe you're gonna go to one of our local swimming pools. So think about that and think about who you're gonna take with you, and then we'll revisit this towards the end of the presentation. So we received a grant. It's called the Kids Plates Grant. It's funded by registration fees, um, the specialty license plates. So if you purchase a license plate that has a star, a handprint, a heart, or a plus sign, it, um, those, they grant out some of those funds from the registration fees. And we were very, very fortunate to receive one of those grants. It's a two-year grant. And, um, last fall, you may recall, we presented our strategic plan, and there were some child mortality, um, statistics in the back of that compared Amador County to California. And they were a little bit concerning and we wanted to really focus efforts on keeping our kids safe. Next slide, please. So the water safety, um, component of this grant is, uh, we are focused on some key areas. Building swim skills is really one of the areas. So we provided vouchers to train new lifeguards. We were able to provide thirteen vouchers to cover the cost, which can be very expensive, to, um, to get lifeguards trained through the city of Jackson, and one, one renewal. So we, um, we're excited about that. And then swim, um, swim lesson vouchers. We were, are able to provide seventy-three vouchers to help kids get, um, swim lessons that may otherwise not be able to have that opportunity. And, um, we did a recent life vest distribution just this last Saturday out at Lake Comanche. Um, we gave out a hundred and one life, life jackets. And we've, um, done a lot of education and the outreach with the vouchers. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, we've partnered with a lot of agencies in the community, which we're excited about. The lifeguard training, the city of Jackson was very helpful. They have an on-staff, um, certified trainer, so it allowed the opportunity for lifeguards to be trained here locally, which is wonderful. Often in the past, they've had to go out of the county to get the training, and then we were able to offer these vouchers to cover the cost. As I mentioned, it, it can be quite expensive. And more lifeguards means more, um, if you could go back one. More lifeguards mean, means more lessons that can be offered. And we were able to offer those vouchers through partner agencies as well. We, um, partnered with the school district, First Five, lots of, I think there were twelve different agencies that we partnered with to help get the vouchers out to kids that need them. And then we partnered with the sheriff's boat patrol and, um, East Bay Mud, and the Comanche Recreation Company just this last weekend, and had a very successful event, getting life jackets on kids. Um, we've done a lot of outreach and education as well, um, and I'll show you some pictures later. Next slide, please. So we're trying to really increase awareness around, um, the myth that it's, if kids are struggling in the water, you'll hear them. Um, in the movies it's portrayed, that they're splashing and noise, and in reality, it's really quite silent. Kids just can slip under the water and it takes just seconds. So it's really important to never leave the kids unsupervised, and we're just really working hard to promote that, um, message. Next slide, please.
I, uh, you know, when I was a kid, we had a pool. And, uh, I remember we were having, there was a fam, not a family party, it was a party with a lot of people. And people were swimming and, um, all of a sudden, somebody said, where's my brother? And everybody's looking around and he had, he was in the pool and he had been down there probably for about a minute. So it wouldn't have been much longer, he would've drowned. But just like you're saying, nobody noticed, very quiet.
Right. And, um, it has been amazing to me, as we've, I've gathered to, um, do presentations, there's always a story. Um, and it's tragic, sometimes it's a tragic story. So I'm glad that your brother's okay. Um, so in May, um, as I said, it's the, um, National Water Safety Month, and we've been promoting this idea of a water watcher. I have a badge on and I bought some extra, if anyone would like one. It's, um, assigning someone to watch the kids. In today's world, it's so easy to be distracted, and like you said, a party, there's a lot of people, you know, gathered together, visiting and talking. You get a text message, you know, there's a lot of things to distract us, and next thing you know, somebody's having a, you know, struggle in the water.
You know, I don't know if it's old age or if it's distraction, but a couple of times, oops, I got a kettle of water on the stove. And I think it's, it's these little things and, yeah, they get you.
Very easy to get distracted. So these water watcher badges, I wasn't sure how they would go over. Um, I've made a bunch of them and a lot of people have asked for them. So we've distributed probably, in the neighborhood, about three hundred of them throughout our community. And it just, um, the idea is to assign one person to step aside, people see the badge, it's a visual reminder, I need to leave them alone, I'll talk to them when they're done with their shift, and rotate that out. And that can be anywhere, even at a, a lake, a stream, a pool. Um, so this is a, a great concept. Next slide, please. So we've partnered with the city of Jackson, um, through the swim vouchers and the lifeguard training, and they were all, also gracious enough to have the water watcher tags for us. Up Country Pool as well, if people are shopping at Up, Up Country Pool, they most likely have a pool. So, um, they've been kind enough to have those in their store as well. So these are kind of the six, um, areas of focus. Swim skills, of course, we really are excited about being able to offer those swim lessons. Confidence in the water is really, really important, as well as those layers of protection, especially adult supervision. And being close enough to the kids to scoop them out of the water and not stepping away from, um, a pool or a lake. If you have to step away, take the kids with you. Sometimes it's not convenient, but it's the safest thing to do. I, um, can share a personal story as well. I was probably nine years old and I'd had one swim lesson. And so in my little nine-year-old mind, I was a proficient swimmer. And I convinced my sister to let me take her into the deep end. And as soon as I stepped off the ledge where I could no longer touch, her and I were both having a little bit of a, a crisis, and thankfully, I did have an adult supervisor that scooped me out of the water. So I'm here today to share this presentation.
Well, it's funny, my grandkids, even, uh, even if they can swim, when they were younger, um, if they get in the shallow part and they start having, started having trouble, they didn't realize, all they had to do was stand up because they're so frustrated and so afraid of, of drowning. So, um, just something as simple as that, just teaching them, well, you can just stand up sometimes. It goes way beyond that, though, so.
Right. Having the swim skills and the swim lessons to build that confidence is really important. And, um, I just, I think about how important it is to have somebody to scoop you out of the water, because I still remember that, and it's been many decades, so, um, having my aunt save me was good, and my sister. Next slide, please. So this is just some of our outreach. We did a really fun camp at the Accra, um, spring camp that they did. Uh, we had a lot of water activities and taught them about how to do, uh, throw rescue, where you throw something that floats to a friend to pull them in. Next slide, please. So now let's go back to our, um, our hot summer day in Amador County. Think about where you are and who you're with, and then if you could just reflect on what we talked about today, and, um, think about how you might implement something to just, maybe one thing to help promote water safety, like for yourself and for your family and friends and for our community, because it really takes all of us working together to make an impact.
That water's too cold, I'll tell you that right off bat. But, uh, I've gone, I've gone down to New Malonas, um, uh, and gone skiing down there. And I tried a little experiment to myself. I'm a fairly qualified swimmer, but, uh, what was interesting is I dived off the end of the boat into the, that greenish, brackish water there, closed my eyes, spun myself around, and I honestly couldn't figure up, figure out for a second where up and down was. And that was kind of a, a spooky thought. I, you know, then I figured out to blow out some bubbles and follow the bubbles.
That's great.
So that, that was an interesting, you know, lesson learned.
Right.
You still get spooked at an older age.
Having that conversation in your head to not panic.
Yep.
Yeah. And then I just have a couple more slides. I mentioned that it's water safety focused, the grant, it also has a component of car seat safety and bike safety. So, um, we have a car seat program already at Public Health and, um, attend events, and people can make an appointment to have their car seat checked and ensure it's installed properly. And then we have done a couple of bike rodeos. The most recent one was that celebrate our children, and we partnered with the Jackson Fire Department, and they were kind enough to donate twenty-five helmets, and then Public Health had ninety helmets, and we gave away all one hundred and fifteen helmets.
Wow.
And, um, a bike rodeo is, uh, we had stations where we taught the parents and children how to properly fit their helmet, and then, um, they learned about hand signals to use on the road and how to pump up a tire, and then they got to go on a track. We have bikes that we let them use and they practice their hand signals. And then they took a pledge that they will always wear their helmet when they, for every ride. So, um, this has been a really great grant for us. We're hoping that we can somehow sustain it, cause the need seems great. And here's some more pictures of us in action. That's all? Next slide?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. Um, you know, I'm on the Accra Board and, and having lifeguards for their pool program is, is, uh, um, uh, something that's really important, but there's a real shortage, there's been a shortage. It's quite a bit of expense to become certified, um, for that position, and, um, it's really helpful that, uh, that these grants are available for that, so we have more lifeguards in the area. And, um, I just can't, uh, say how, how important that is for the, for that program to continue and the, uh, there's a lot of kids that go to the pools in the summertime, um, and, uh, you know, it's, it'd be good to, you have even more, uh, lifeguards than those that could do the educational aspect of it, do the swim training, cause that requires an additional certification as well, so, um, you know, the, I, I'd like to see more of it and to expand, you know, cause it is being taken advantage of in the community.
Definitely.
I'd like to add on to that, is that I would appreciate if you could've, uh, been, added Accra as a partner. You know, when you were first coordinating a lot of this, is that you were working on, with a lot of different projects, and I'm just, I wish you would've been able to come before our board to, to kinda explain some of the stuff that was going on.
I just have a picture in here of, of Accra.
Well, I can say that we did reach out to Accra initially. And they told us that they wouldn't be offering swim lessons this season.
Yeah.
So that's why we did partner with the city of Jackson, but I did reach out, um, to the city of Plymouth, and I'm happy to, next year, expand.
Please.
Absolutely, of course.
I'd appreciate it.
Yes, the more we can spread the wealth, for sure.
It's hard enough getting lifeguards just to do the lifeguarding.
You know, the, the only thing else good is, except for Ione, you know, the other cities are representative on the Acc Board. You know, the, the only thing else good is, except for Ione, you know, the other cities are representative on the act board, plus the school. So, it's, you know, it's just another, uh, avenue that I'm just hoping we get really part of. I mean, I, I appreciate you reaching out, like you said you did, and I'm just hoping we can, you know, make that work better for us in the future.
It is my plan for the fall to, we, all this planning began last fall, so, um, of course, we, we plan to do that for this-
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, we have item six F, this is review and possible approval of the May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four Board Supervisors Meeting Minutes.
I put in one, one of my corrections.
Um, page one twenty-nine, under Resolution Number twenty-four dash oh six oh, it, it says right on the bottom of the page, A C C E, I think it means A C C F.
Right, well, E is right before F.
Yep, and is that, um-
I'll make that an F then, Richard.
Is our M H S A Program Coordinator Melissa Osilio, is that correct?
The-
I thought it was Melissa Cranfield, but it's-
Yeah, that's who it is.
That's on page one twenty-six, under the Behavioral Health item, in the, in the motion.
Stephanie used to do a lot of that, but she left. Yeah.
Under one, under Behavioral Health.
Yeah, I, I thi- I think it's under Behavioral Health, so I just leave Melissa.
I just didn't know if we had a Melissa, Melissa Osilio. I don't know. Okay.
We can make, if there needs a correction, we can make it then.
I would move approval with one correction and one we gotta find out.
Well, there was another one on a vote, I think the Public Works vote, I think it's-
It was three to two.
Yeah, but, uh, Brian voted in favor, I think, I think he voted against.
I voted against, it says, uh, it says, Onetto Axe-
I think, no, he, he's right.
Yeah, you were, you were the no, Brian was the yes, right?
No. I think on, on that one, uh-
I was a no.
He was a no, and I think Pat was a yes.
Okay.
Uh, I'd say it's, I think Frank is right.
I think that's it.
Okay.
So, with that, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with those corrections, or at least try to find out what the-
Okay.
Okay. I guess we'll need-
Members of the public, so we have a motion, a second, um, roll call. Motion was by Axe, second one's by Forster, correct?
Correct.
Chairman Onetto?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Crew?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Forster?
Aye.
Supervisor Axe?
Aye.
Hey, Pat, we were just testing to see if you were still on.
Oh, yeah, and I did vote yes on the Public Works.
Yep. Our board will go into closed session at this time, and we're adjourned to regular meeting until, where do you put that?
Till next time.
Till our next meeting.